Thank you. If there's anybody out here that wants to comment tonight, there's some comment cards in the back, so just fill those out and then share your rate there, get them up to us. If you need a pen, let her know, she's probably got one of those, too.
Good evening and welcome to beautiful downtown Grand Forks. This is Monday, February 7th, 2022, Grand Forks Jobs Development Authority. Welcome and roll call.
Weigel? Dockler?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Mock?
Here.
Cavami?
Here.
Sandy?
Here.
Dean?
Here.
Mayor Bucinski?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Item two, JDA action items. 2.1, FlexPace request for Acme Electric.
Thank you, Ms. Mock. We have before you tonight a request from Acme Electric for another FlexPace request. As you know, Acme is kind of a homegrown success story, founded in Grand Forks in 1948, and now one of the leading online retailers of tools in both nationally and internationally. Acme was one of our first occupants in the business park, and they've been to the JDA for assistance on a major expansion in 2014. And again, in 2019, they're back now to request assistance with some kind of e-commerce infrastructure upgrades. And so the request is for a $76,697,000 FlexPace loan, which would leverage a $142,000 BND grant. This would be used to help buy down the interest on a $3 million equipment and working capital loan with Wells Fargo. As this kind of standard for these types of loans, the payment to the JDA would be deferred for five years and then repaid thereafter at monthly payments at a 1% interest rate. In terms of security, the previous growth fund loan with Acme used basically an assignment of a certificate of deposit due to Acme's kind of understood reluctance to disclose their financial information. That worked perfectly well on the previous loan, and so that is the request and the recommendation for securing this loan as well. We do have Mr. Scott Foyt in the audience if you have any questions. But again, we're asking you to hold a public hearing and then approve the FlexPace loan as stated. Certainly answer any questions, or Mr. Foyt could answer those if you have any.
Thank you. Let's open the public hearing. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions?
Recognizing this is a great local business and consistent with the recommendation from the Growth Fund Committee, I move support of the staff recommendation.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.2, C-Run Loan Program. Do you want me to read off A and B or just... Okay, thank you.
We do have kind of a two-part item on our C-Run Loan Program. As you recall, the Growth Fund received a $1.3 million award of CARES Act funding to establish a revolving loan fund to address COVID pandemic and recovery. At the time that we received that funding, EDA was fairly adamant, and our plan reflects this, that the funding needed to directly impact COVID response, and we had requirements that the businesses had to be in a, basically economically viable and functioning as of March of 2020 to be eligible. As the pandemic has unfolded and the recovery is ongoing, EDA has kind of encouraged those who received these funds to kind of abandon that direct COVID response requirement and instead look at long-term economic resilience, both for specific businesses and the local economy in general. So as we near the end of our initial disbursement phase, the deadline for that is June of this year, we're asking for a couple of kind of final amendments to our plan to align with EDA's new guidance and to help us actually get the last $393,000 that we have available, obligated and dispersed. Those changes are to just eliminate the requirement that borrowers show a direct negative COVID impact and that the business does not have to have been viable pre-pandemic. We did also have a requirement that any loans of greater than $200,000, the applicant needed to show extraordinary circumstances. We no longer feel that's necessary, given, you know, the time that has passed and while we have interest, we don't have overwhelming demand for these funds. We do have, as I said, $393,000 left to expend. We have a couple of loans that are... One that we're fairly confident will come to Growth Fund Committee next month for action. Another one that's pretty close. So both of those that are more or less in the pipeline would require these modifications to be eligible, but we do think that with these modifications, we can get that money out the door and eligible for revolving in the second phase, which is the second staff report associated with this. Colin Hansen, who kind of administers this program on a day-to-day basis, is here. If you'd like to, you know, talk about the applicants that he's talking to and what he's seeing, but the request is to approve those modifications as I've described, and then we'll, with any luck at all, we'll have this money all out the door by June at the latest.
Mr. Weber.
I don't believe this required... Either of these require a public hearing, is that correct?
We put them under the public hearing portion of the agenda, just to be safe.
All right, well, let's open the public hearing. Seeing no one, let's close the public hearing.
I'll move approval of both.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second? Second, Beane. Any further comments or questions?
Question?
Yes.
Meredith, how are we verbalizing this change to the general public?
We have information on the city's website. We are working and have always worked closely with SBDC in terms of applicant outreach, so nothing extraordinary. We don't have a lot left, so we're not going to start a big marketing campaign, but...
But this is a very significant change to the program.
It is significant in the removal of that requirement that there be direct COVID...
That was the biggest requirement, though, right? That was probably one of the most difficult requirements to meet.
Well, we did...
No, I'm sorry. All I'm getting at is I think we should try to figure out how to... If we don't have anything other than the website, I think we should try to do a little bit more than that. I'll leave that up to you guys to figure out.
We can certainly do that. We have, you know, used others kind of email lists. When we launched this, we could do one last blast and get the word out.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Further comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.3, Authorized Award of Contracts for Tech Accelerator Fit-Up.
Excuse me, let me get to my right page in my binder here. As we all know, the city and the JDA was awarded EDA funds to help with the fit-up of the Herald Building as a tech accelerator. That was $1,079,000 of EDA funding to be matched dollar-for-dollar locally. The overall budget for the whole project was about $3 million, which would cover the items that EDA wouldn't fund, such as design and furnishings. However, when we opened bids on the construction portion on the 26th, we were pleasantly surprised and the bids came in well underestimated at $1.464 million. There were a couple of minor irregularities. The one that I want to spend the most time on is the... There was an electrical bid from Fusion Automation. Fusion has requested to withdraw that bid. If you look at the bid tabulation, you can see that that bid was well below the next low bid, and so the recommendation is that they be allowed to withdraw that bid without penalty, without us drawing on their bid bond, since it does appear to be an honest mistake. Other than that, we recommend proceeding with the contracts listed under your staff-recommended action with Diversified as the general contractor, Linfoot as the mechanical contractor, and Northern Valley Electric as the electric contractor. Since we are well under budget, we have been talking with EDA's construction staff about how to use the excess funds, so to speak. EDA's requirements are such that we can't really expand the original scope of the project, but we can certainly add back items that were cut to meet those original budget projections, and that's what we're looking at. Things like HVAC improvements that were cut, work in the restrooms that was fairly minimal, looking at actually replacing some of those old fixtures with something a little more efficient. EDA has been, you know, the rep has stated that they don't get bonus points for taking money back. They want the community to benefit as much as we can with the funds that were awarded. So I'm pretty confident that we will be coming back with some change orders, but those will take the form of change orders post-award. So the request tonight is to award those contracts as I listed. We do have Sean Senesko from JLG if you have any questions, and attached your staff report was just some renderings from, you know, previous staff reports to kind of refresh your memory on what the interior of that tech accelerator is supposed to look like. But with that, certainly answer any questions, or Sean could, and requesting authorization to proceed with award of contracts at this time.
Thank you. Let's open the public hearing. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Questions, comments? Mr. Weber?
I'll move verbal.
Oh, good.
Mr. Sandy.
And I'll second. Mr. Cavami at the Growth Fund Committee had asked for clarification, and it's worth repeating, that if there are any additional work, that this would be covered up to a limit by the EDA with a one-to-one match. But while we have a list of possibilities, all of those would come back for approval before that move forward. And with that, I'm ready to vote.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimously. Item three, informational items and updates. 3.1, EDA Good Jobs Challenge.
Well, in our continuing relationship with EDA, the city is partnering with Economic Development Corporation to submit a Good Jobs Challenge Grant application to EDA. This is a $500 million opportunity, competitive nationwide, funded through ARPA. The EDA's purpose is to get Americans back to work at good-paying jobs, with that kind of defined as jobs that exceed the local prevailing wage. Their approach to doing it was to kind of stimulate regional economies by working with employers to find out what is needed to get people into those good-paying jobs and create the training programs to help people move up. While it's not an EDA requirement, EDA really encourages applicants to look at kind of an equity element and how can this process make sure that kind of underserved or marginalized populations are brought into this process. So in Grand Forks, I'm working real closely with Becca Kruger at the EDC, who is their kind of workforce expert. We've held some listening sessions that brought together manufacturing sector employers, local representatives such as plant managers and HR folks, you know, companies that you've heard of, Simplot, LM, Retraks. They're very interested. They have huge workforce, unmet workforce needs, and would welcome opportunities to expand that pool. In terms of the supply side, we held listening sessions with kind of general social service providers in the community, such as the Housing Authority, Spectra Health, but focusing in on two specific underserved populations, namely new Americans and justice-impacted individuals. So the approach is to hear from the employers what sort of training they need to get people into those good jobs, and then hear from the support agencies what sort of kind of basic skills and wraparound services, such as transportation, childcare, that sort of thing, to kind of bring these underrepresented populations to the workforce table. It's generated a very rewarding amount of excitement and interest, both from the manufacturing employer side, the support agency side, and our regional EDA rep also thinks this is terrific work being done. I don't want to be too pessimistic, but I wonder if Grand Forks has the numbers to really catch the eye of the national EDA reviewers, but I'm pretty confident that even if we don't get funded on this national level, we will be able to get some funding from EDA through our regional office to support some kind of planning grants, to really pursue this in a little more detail and get it launched in some form or fashion. Ms. Dockler had some better words than I did at Growth Fund Committee in terms of the impact that this could make, but what I really want to emphasize is that there has been such a tremendous outpouring of interest in taking this perspective on workforce development that I think we're really on to something, and more to come.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the committee? Seeing none. Item 3.2, Nissler Col BPA.
With that, I'm happy to quit talking and introduce Sean Senesko from JLG to kind of walk you through some of the visuals on the progress at the Nissler.
Good evening, everyone. So I've been asked to give a update on the design progress for the Workforce Development Center at the Nissler College of Business. In 2021, we had a handful of meetings with Mayor Bucinski, Todd Fieland, and Tangi and some others from Human Resources on the space. And now we're at a point where we'd like to give kind of a design update to the JDA. Page one here is the first floor plan of the Nissler College of Business and Public Administration. Just wanted to show the location of the Workforce Development Center within that plan. The Workforce Development Center is located at a really highly accessible, highly visible location within the...
Are we supposed to see a presentation at all, or... Oh, there we go. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Can I ask if there's a way you can turn up the mic? Is that possible? Nope. No?
I can talk louder, does that help? So the Workforce Development Center within the Nissler College of Business is... It's located at a really highly accessible, highly visible location within the plan. So as I go to page two, it's located at kind of the confluence or the intersection of two of the major spaces within the project. The first dynamic space is the Grand Atrium. So the Grand Atrium connects the north entry all the way through the spine of the building to the south entry, so a lot of the foot traffic is going to be coming north through south through the building. The next kind of dynamic space, located adjacent to the Workforce Development Center, is what we call the Community Hub. So the Community Hub is what we like to call the living room of the project. It's an open, multipurpose space with flexible furniture to allow students to get together with groups, faculty-student interaction, really anybody can come here and interact. So page three shows the location of the Workforce Development Center, located in green. So it's right at, like I said, the confluence, the intersection of those two spaces for a really accessible, really visible space within the project. Jumping into the space itself to talk a little bit about the details of the space. The Workforce Development Center is a 450-square-foot space within the building. The east side of the Workforce Development Center is all glass, so it's nine-foot-high glass with 28 feet wide, for a lot of great visibility into Student Engagement Hub, a space that is connected within a larger area within the Nissler College of Business. Also provides really great visibility to that Community Hub that I pointed out. So the goal is to get a lot of visibility into the space, out of the space, while also providing for acoustic separation to maintain that for the space. The space itself is one large, open space, but we've chosen to divide it into a couple spaces with the furniture. So I'll point out on the north side, it's more of a soft seating environment. There's individual chairs and a large couch with some tables that can be moved. This is going to be great for students working individually. There's also a flat panel display located on the north wall for sharing of video and audio and things of that nature. And then on the south side of the space is more of a meeting conferencing space, so if there needs to be a meeting that includes a conference call, we have the ability to have a Teams or Zoom meeting come from that space. It has all the technology to support that with a flat panel display, video connection, audio connection, and then all of the cameras and microphones to support that. The space itself is locked and secured from the other spaces within the building, but just to provide some additional secure storage, we have a storage credenza as well that's furniture and can be locked for technology or any equipment that needs to be locked within the space. All of the furniture is flexible, so as the space grows or changes, the furniture can allow for that flexibility as well. Page seven shows an example of the signage that will be outside of the Workforce Development Center. All of the donor branding and recognition for the project was hired by a third-party designer called Advent, so I want to make sure that I give them the credit they deserve for their work, but that gives you an idea of the signage. And then the final page gives an idea, is a rendering of the space, gives you kind of an idea of the volume, how the furniture is arranged, some of the finishes and the furniture. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the group.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Sandy.
I've got a question, but it's not for Sean.
Okay. In general, or would you...
Who's responsible for the programming of this space?
Well, it's going to be a joint effort. This is meant to just be an update on the physical space, and we'll come back in the future with some programming on both this and the tech accelerator.
Great. Looking back, when we were talking about this space before, I thought we were going to have maybe intern, student help, people that are going to be spending a fair amount of time here talking about the city of Grand Forks. In my mind, I'm picturing somebody sitting behind a desk or having a personal place, and this doesn't appear to have a spot like that for anyone that's actually working for us. So, and that's not necessarily for Sean, I'm just... It's food for thought. I'm not... How are we... I'm not sure how we're going to deal with that, but...
Well, as Sean said, the goal here is flexibility, so it could be rearranged, just with the furnishings, to, I guess, be more...
But I'm not saying it needs to be an office, because I think this looks great. It looks very welcoming, and students are going to want to spend time there. I'm just hoping that an intern's going to want to spend time there, too. And if you don't have your own personal space, it's hard to become attached to it, that's all.
And I can provide some comment, too, Mr. Sandy. That did get brought up, interns working here, collaborating with other interns or working by themselves, and the furniture arrangement was, let's provide a whole bunch of different options to give students. Similar, if you walk in the Memorial Union, you want to sit down and work on a project, you have a whole bunch of different options for how you might do that work. That's what we're trying to achieve here on a kind of a micro level.
I agree, and that's great. To me, it looks like an awesome, very comfortable study area that's going to be filled with a whole bunch of young people studying their books rather than learning about workforce development in our community. Again, I'm not against that, I just that... To me, it doesn't look like a place where somebody's stationed to be open, to have conversations or whatever. But again, I don't get people these days, anyway.
Mr. Bean.
Yeah, if I'd like to follow on with what Mr. Sandy was saying, and looking at your process, typically you figure out your program and then you make sure your space fits your programming, right?
Correct.
Has that been done in this case, too?
Yep, we had a couple of meetings with Tangi from Human Resources to talk about how they might use the space. All of those went into the development of the space itself, including the furniture.
Further comments or questions? This was just informational.
Correct.
We don't need to take any action.
No action.
Seeing none?
I'll move to adjourn.
We have a motion, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, to welcome everybody. Grand Forks City Council Meeting, Monday, February 7th, 2022. Roll call, please, Marine.
Weigel? Dockler?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Mock? Cavami?
Here.
Sandy?
Here.
And Dean?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. Item 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance. We got a special treat today, Ms. Moore's fourth-grade class, Holy Family St. Mary's is here. They're going to come up. Why don't you guys come up here by the flag with us? You're going to face the flag. All right, here. Who's going to start? We're going to have you start. How to start?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I am a peacemaker. I treat myself and others with respect. I listen, I share, I care for the earth, air, water, plants, and animals. I am informed of this very big world. I know because peace begins with me.
Yeah. It's a great class. I got a chance to read with them about two months ago, and they said they wanted to come do this, so we finally made it work, so... Thank you, Ms. Moore. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Item 1.3, Mayor's Announcements. Just have a couple announcements today. Just wanted to take a moment to memorialize Attorney General Wayne Stenham, obviously Grand Forks roots, as a UND alum. Passed away too young, 68 years old, just a few days shy of his 69th birthday. Entered politics in 1976, served Grand Forks in both the House and the Senate, was the longest-serving Attorney General in the history of North Dakota. So I want to just take a moment to thank Mr. Stenham for his service and send prayers to his loved ones. Thank you. The only other announcement that we had is Governor Bergen was in for a trip out to Grand Sky, and we had the Vice President of ISR for Northrop Grumman came out for his first visit. He had originally been in the Navy's program, under the Trident program, but now he's helping out with the Global Hawks, and they're repurposing, so a lot more investments taking place out of Grand Sky, going to be pretty exciting. So he came to town to meet with the governor and myself out there, and then at the Chamber of Commerce annual meeting, so we can also thank the government for coming out and speaking at that. With that, we will move on to two awards presentations, appointments, and proclamations.
2.1 is the Wildlife Mitigation 2021 Overview, including a 2021 Summer Report.
All right, I believe we got Ms. Parvi running point, and then do we have a Ms. Dorothy Dalton with us here today from the USDA? Oh, great, I'll let you run.
Thank you, Melanie, for the introduction. So to reiterate, my name is Dorothy Dalton. I'm a Biological Sciences Technician with USDA Wildlife Services, and the primary objective of my position is to mitigate wildlife airstrikes at Grand Forks International Airport by conducting management activities at the Grand Forks Wastewater Treatment Plant. And though USDA and the city of Grand Forks have been collaborating on this project since 2018, 2021 was the first year that the position was full-time, so I'm here to update you all tonight on my 2021 field season and future plans and development. So with that being said, an overview of my 2021 field season, I worked about 1,300 hours from April to November. Like I said, I was stationed primarily at the Grand Forks Wastewater Treatment Plant, and that's where I conducted most of my management operations out of. And tonight, I'm going to go over the wildlife airstrike information at JFK for 2021, a cooperative graduate research project between USDA, the city of Grand Forks, and UND, and a collaborative undergraduate wildlife management internship program offered by the city of Grand Forks and overseen by USDA employees. And so this graphic is just a simple pie chart of how I spent my time. You can see that I spent the majority of my time at the wastewater treatment plant and doing administrative tasks, including doing research for my graduate research project. And so with that being said, some background on wildlife management and aviation safety. There are about 230,000 wildlife collisions with civil aircraft from 1990 to 2019 within the U.S., resulting in $900 million in damages from 1990 to 2019. And the primary species involved with wildlife airstrikes are migratory waterfowl, gulls, mourning doves, and passerines. And so in the context of Grand Forks, North Dakota, we have GFK, Grand Forks International Airport, which is, as I'm sure many of you know, the 23rd busiest airport in the United States with an average of over 300,000 flights annually. This is largely due to UND's aviation school, but also commercial flights do operate out of that airport. And so if you look at the landscape complex in a five-mile radius from Grand Forks International Airport, we have immediately adjacent to GFK, the Grand Forks Wastewater Treatment Plant. Like I said, immediately adjacent, North Dakota is stationed in the central flyway, which is one of the four major migration channels for migratory waterfowl in the United States. So you combine that with the 1,300 acres of open water at the Grand Forks Wastewater Treatment Plant, and it is certainly a hotspot for wildlife activity. A mile north of the Grand Forks Wastewater Treatment Plant, we have a privately-owned commercial cattle feedlot, and it's a wildlife attractant largely due to the fact that the cattle are fed raw and processed potatoes and corn. So in terms of my management activities at the Grand Forks Wastewater Treatment Plant and the cattle feedlot, this fall, or this year, I implemented an integrated wildlife damage management strategy and used primarily pyrotechnics, a laser, propane cannons. I also used predator effigies, human mannequins, and fledable sky dancers, a remote-controlled boat, and a visual deterrent raft, and I very intermittently, lethally removed individuals with a firearm for the sole purpose of maintaining and reinforcing the efficacy of all of the non-lethal tools that I used. At the Grand Forks Wastewater Treatment Plant, I saw about 280,000 birds from April to November, most of which were waterfowl and gulls. And at the commercial cattle feedlot, I saw about 48,000 birds, most of which were gulls. This photo is just an example of a pyrotechnic launcher and screamers, which are a type of pyrotechnic that I use a lot of this season. And so these visuals are more specific harassment information on a month-to-month basis for both the wastewater treatment plant and the commercial cattle feedlot. If you notice, the fall migration period was by and large the busiest. Spring migration was also very busy, and summer was the least busiest. These trends are clearly reflected in the data on these graphs. So in terms of wildlife aviation interactions at GFK for this year, I began analyzing the data by defining species of concern. So the species that USDA has the ability to influence through our management operations at the Grand Forks Wastewater Treatment Plant, these are mostly waterfowl and gulls, given the wildlife attractants such as food and cover at the Grand Forks Wastewater Treatment Plant. And some examples of these species would be various duck species, Canada geese, tundra swans, and American coots. We also have ring-balled gulls and Franklin's gulls. For 2021, there were a total of 36 interactions reported to the FAA by GFK. There were three carcasses found near or on the runway, 13 assumed or confirmed airstrikes, and 20 evasive maneuvers. Species of concern were involved in 19 out of 36 of these total reports. They were involved in three out of 13 airstrikes and 16 out of 20 evasive maneuvers. And something that is crucial to understanding and contextualizing this data is that evasive maneuvers were consistently reported for the first time beginning in October 2021. So as we go forward analyzing that data, keep that in mind. So this table has organized all of the reported interactions from 2014 to 2021. USDA began this project in 2018. So I assume, I organized the data and assumed or confirmed airstrikes, evasive maneuvers, discovered carcasses for total reported interactions for each year. Again, it's very critical to point out that evasive maneuvers are an incomplete data point for every year from 2014 to 2020, given the fact they were either inconsistently reported or not reported at all to the FAA as airstrikes. So when I was trying to determine the metric of my management efforts this year, going forward in analysis, I focused specifically on assumed or confirmed strikes. And as we see in this data, assumed or confirmed strikes have gone down since USDA has been present at the Grand Forks Wastewater Treatment Plant. And then I took it a step further, and I standardized the rate of wildlife airstrikes by flight activity at JFK or GFK from 2018 to 2021. So again, taking the assumed or confirmed airstrikes and standardizing it by the total number of annual flights for each year that USDA has been present at the Grand Forks Wastewater Treatment Plant, and again, we see a reduction in the rate of incidents of wildlife airstrikes. And then I took it another step further, and I organized it specifically based on species-specific interactions, again, from 2014, so four years before USDA started this project, to 2021, so four years after USDA began. And again, as a reminder, species of concern encompasses waterfowl and gulls. So organizing the strike data based off of species grouping, this graph demonstrates a reduction specifically with interactions of species of concern at GFK since USDA's presence at the wastewater treatment plant. And then other aspects of this job, since it was its first year as a full-time position, were to assist with urban wildlife mitigation efforts throughout Grand Forks. So there was a very open line of communication between the Grand Forks Police Department and myself this last year, and I was able to assist with skunks, raccoons, opossums, coyotes, foxes, beavers, ground squirrels, and pigeons, but specifically, skunks, raccoons, coyotes, and ground squirrels. And I also had the opportunity this fall to help the Grand Forks Park District with beaver trapping in Sotoma Park. And then a highlight, I think, of this year is the Wildlife Management Undergraduate Internship Program, offered by the city of Grand Forks and overseen by USDA employees. This internship provided two part-time positions to undergraduate students at UND and gave them the opportunity to get experience with cooperative wildlife damage mitigation efforts for the benefit of aviation safety at GFK. This took a high degree of collaboration between city, federal, and airport employees. Their duties were very similar to mine. They're stationed at the Grand Forks Wastewater Treatment Plant, and on a daily basis, they use pyrotechnics, a laser, propane cannons, effigies, and mannequins. In addition, they're responsible for daily species surveys, hazardous material inventories, and their personal administrative responsibilities. On top of all of this, I assign them an independent research project in which I ask them to either come up with an entirely new management plan or incorporate a new management tool. And so one of our interns explored the possibility and the potential effects of implementing enhanced habitat management at the Grand Forks Wastewater Treatment Plant. And our other intern researched the logistics involved with implementing an autonomic laser system at the wastewater treatment plant. And then a final note, the collaborative research efforts between USDA, the city of Grand Forks, and UND last year, I was admitted for a Master's of Science in Biology at UND with Dr. Susan Fuligi's Wildlife Biology Lab. This is an excellent example of the collaboration that has gone on between the city of Grand Forks, USDA Wildlife Services, and the University of North Dakota. And as it stands right now, my graduate research project has three parts to it. It will include a literature review on all existing relevant literature, and then we'll move into a data analysis of the relationship between airstrikes at GFK and USDA presence at the Grand Forks Wastewater Treatment Plant. And then finally, we'll include a pilot bird movement study in which my team and I will use non-lethal methods to capture and tag species of interest with radiometry tags to collect a very detailed level of movement and behavioral data on these species, specifically to examine the efficacy of different management tools and any species-specific behavioral movement data. And so with that being said, that is the end of my tale, and I would just like to express sincere gratitude to the city of Grand Forks and UND for their support thus far with this project.
Well, thank you for the work that you do. Looks like a tough job, but when you're talking about pyrotechnics and propane cannons and data, you piqued my interest, but we'll leave it at that. You've done a great job. You can clearly see by the data, so we appreciate all the work that you're doing, and we're happy to have you here. Are you open to any questions? If anybody has any questions?
Just a quick one. How do you use the lasers? I've known, you know, what the others, kind of how you utilize them, but exactly what are the lasers?
So the laser emits a green beam of light, which, it's specifically green light, given the wavelengths of light that birds are sensitive to, not to get too technical, but, so they're most annoyed by green light. And so it's a completely non-lethal method of management that basically just makes them uncomfortable in an area and gets them to leave the wastewater treatment plant.
All right, thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, City Council. The reason for bringing this forward to you tonight is later on, in the next couple of weeks, we'll have a financial work plan that will be asking you to approve through the committee and council process to continue the work at the wastewater treatment plant. And Sharon wanted to share some information on how it impacts her department.
Ms. Lipsch, please.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor Bartowski. I just wanted to comment that the wildlife mitigation plan has been a key factor in getting our letter of support from the FAA to go from a bailing facility to a loose-fill operation at the landfill. And it was also instrumental in helping us renew our solid waste management permit that we will be getting shortly. A couple of other notes I wanted to make you aware of, that Cell C Construction will go up for bids starting on Wednesday, February 9, and those bids will be due on March 7, and I will bring those here to the City Council for that. We have a few other things that are being worked on for the landfill, and I will be following up with you guys at a later date for those. Lastly, it's been a great partnership, working with Melanie and everybody on this project, so I think we've seen the benefit of it.
All right, thank you. All right, that'll do it for item 2.1.
2.2 is a COVID-19 update.
Mr. Doolitz, you said you had it cut down in half tonight, so we'll time you.
Time me. Mayor Bartowski and members of the council, I'm Michael Doolitz with Grand Forks Public Health here to do a COVID-19 update. So looking at a week-end review, what we've seen overall is the number of new cases has dropped by more than half from two weeks ago, and significantly dropped from last week. Our percent positivity is still staying relatively high at 16%, which is higher than what we would normally expect. And we have unfortunately been seeing deaths starting to report out from the Omicron outbreak, with eight deaths reported out in the past month. And then we have actually seen a fair amount of tests administered by Grand Forks Public Health at our site, increasing last week to 2,500. So we've been seeing a relative nosedive in the number of COVID cases being reported out in Grand Forks County, with the leveling out just from the past two days, which I expect that to just be in aberrancy, looking at the delay in testing from last week. So I'd expect to see probably a relatively steep drop again in the overall case rate What you will notice, though, is we are still seeing a lot of cases much higher than what we saw all of last fall, and, you know, still rivaling a lot of the peaks overall in the number of cases. But what has changed right now, hospitalizations have been relatively flat to lower, but the number of people getting hospitalized has decreased significantly. So about 1% of cases right now are actually ending up hospitalized compared to about 3% in previous outbreaks. What hasn't changed, though, is the number of people who are dying from COVID when we compare that to the hospitalization rate. So this is looking at the number of fatalities divided by the number of hospitalizations. That doesn't necessarily mean that an individual had to be hospitalized to be counted on here. People do die at home of COVID-19. But when we compare that, the fatality rate divided by hospitalization, about 15% of the cases that were reported as hospitalized did end up ultimately dying, which is matching more of fall of 2020 than fall of 2021. So the number of overall cases getting hospitalized is decreasing, but if you end up in the hospital, the risk is actually relatively equal from what we're seeing right now. So overall, we have seen about 10 deaths in kind of that Omicron period, starting about the 21st of December. So looking at our bottom line, our case counts are going down really quickly. It is matching a lot of what we were seeing on a national scale with the COVID numbers peaking rapidly and then falling rapidly. What we're seeing in other states is actually falling back down below that 25 case per 100,000 threshold, which is what we would consider to be out of that red period, the red level on our dashboard. We are still seeing a decrease in hospitalizations in this outbreak, so about 1% of cases being hospitalized instead of 3%. The bad part is that hospitalization fatality rate is still remaining high, and the absolute number of cases right now is still high, but is falling down rapidly. And then skipping down to the threats area, our hospitalization count is still having impacts at all true. They are considering their operations right now at Tier 2 orange, which does mean that they are having operational impacts because of the, you know, because of the number of people that they do have hospitalized. With that, I am open to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Doolitz. Any questions for Mr. Doolitz this evening? Thank you for your great work, as always. Appreciate it.
I'm good.
Yeah, that was, you were in there.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to three public hearings and second readings of ordinances.
3.1 is public hearing of final approval of request to vacate alleyway and tillad easement parts of Westwood and Swangler subdivisions.
Thank you. Mr. Brooks is available, but this time, open up the public hearing, item 3.1. All right, public hearing period is closed. Open up to comments or motions from council. Got a motion approved from President Sandy. We have a second. Second for Mr. Veen. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to four action items. Administration was looking to definitely poll 4.3, 4.4, 4.14, and 4.15. Any other items that council wanted to have polled for this evening? Do we need to have 4.1 and 4.2 polled?
No.
Okay, as far as the...
I do not believe you should. We will address those programs as part of 4.3 and 4.4.
Okay, that's helpful.
Did you poll 4.4?
Yeah, 4.3 and 4.4, and then 4.14 and 4.15. So if there's any other ones?
4.10.
4.10. All right, so we'll be moving, looking, consent agenda for items 4.1, 4.2, 4.5, 4.6, 4.7, 4.8, 4.9, 4.11, 4.12. So, we'll be moving, looking consent agenda for items 4.1, 4.2, 4.5, 4.6, 4.7, 4.8, 4.9, 4.11, 4.12, and 4.13. So, we'll be looking for a motion to approve those items. Motion from President Sandy, second from Vice President Mock. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those motions carry. We'll be on to 4.3.
Right. 4.3 is First Robotics' Great Northern Regional Funding Request.
Thank you, Ms. Dorset. You have this one?
Thank you, Mayor Bochensky, members of City Council. If you don't mind, I will speak to actually 4.3 and 4.4 inclusively. These are both regarding event funding requests that came forward to this body as the committee the whole meeting week before last. You did receive requests from event organizers of the robotics and also the Third Street Events that had much discussion, like I said, week before last. Robotics was asking for $25,000 annually for three years, and Third Street Events, a $50,000 request. These requested trigger much discussion just regarding process and funding levels. So, as a review, currently, the city allocates $130,851 towards special events. This has had minimal increases over the years, and it's been based on the sales tax percent increases that we budget for in Fund 2163 for Economic Development. The same allocation is also made toward arts re-granting program. These programs are administered by other bodies. The Special Events is administered by the Visit Greater Grand Forks, Ms. Rig, Julie Rig, and Ms. Becca Bomback organizes through the Community Arts Foundation for the Arts Re- Granting Program. The Third Street Events also, since your last discussion regarding this, did receive $12,000 that was allocated through that Special Events program dollars of the $50,000. So, with this, we did meet, the mayor and I, Mr. Feeland spoke regarding these requests. We also met with community development finance staff, met with different event organizers, and Ms. Rig and Ms. Bomback, just about the process and the program requests and events and arts going forward. What it is clear through those discussions is that the feeling is that the needs of the applicants for these programs is greater than the funding level that we're currently providing. We do have a revision in the recommended action from the motion that was made week before last. What we have been speaking of is looking at these requests that have come before you, reducing that $50,000 request by the $12,000 received for a net of the $38,000. And then going forward, moving these type of requests through the process that's in place between these programs, these specifically with the Special Events, excuse me, and as part of that, work through the 23 budget process and looking at a consideration of increase in funding for these programs. With that, maybe a couple of other things to point out. With the arts item, they did, they were able to secure a grant this year that has helped with the Special Events. I do know they've combined this with other programming dollars that's generated from the tax on hotel rooms, and that they have seen a decline in those dollars available. With that, I'm here for questions and discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Dorset. Mr. Weber, you look confused. Do you have a question?
Hello, Mayor. So, what I'd heard last week was a consensus for doubling the re-grant funds for arts and events. Is that still the intent in the 2023 budget proposal?
Councilmen, members of the City Council, I think that's all up for discussion, what that level will be as part of the 2023 budget. I think it was suggested doubling, but whether that or another dollar, I think the mayor was considering $200,000, but I think that would be more of a discussion as we go through the 2023 budget.
So, currently, the intention is somewhere between 200,000 and 250,000, is...
Yes.
Yeah. With having these two events, that kind of pushes the Special Events really close to that amount for 2022, and with the arts re-granting, having that 150,000, it seems like a grant, it seems like 2022 is going to be covered, so it'll be a matter of in the budget for 2023 and looking at revenues and somewhere between that 200,000 and 250,000. And I'm sure Ms. Rig and Ms. Bomback will be there to give us an opinion as that comes through as well.
And Councilman, Mayor Bochensky and City Council, the other piece of that, in speaking with the mayor, is rather than tying this to a budgeted sales tax percent, we'll tie it to CPI going forward, as it really is inflationary cost to these event organizers.
In fact, if I remember correctly, it wasn't actually the national CPI, it was more of a regional one. Is that correct?
Correct. What we've used in the past is a CPI indicator specifically for the Midwest of a city our size, and that's what we would look to for this as well.
Very good. And then, there was also this issue of requests coming, extraordinary requests, requests coming outside of these two budget allotments. Has there been any discussion about how to handle those going forward?
So, Councilman Weber, members of the City Council, we have reached out to other organizers, and there is no plan of additional requests coming forward to this body. And with the discussion, that will look at increasing the funding levels for those programs, and they'll use that process. And those program administrators really do have the process set in place to properly analyze these requests. What I also did attach to your agenda is the criteria guide that is used, for instance, with the Special Events programs, so you can see what they consider for those events as they're distributing those funds. But they're also looking at the financial information of those organizers and the events and doing, they have a process in place to better administer those.
Yeah. Mr. Weber, I guess if I give you a little more clarity.
Thanks.
I think the hope was if you've got something, you know, similar to a multi-day event at the Alara Center, which we have separate funds for, we'd look at that. But the idea would be using our CVB board, which has, you know, a phenomenal group of members there to do their job and to have more funds to be able to do it, and to push those events there, so they're not coming, you know, if it comes in front of us, it's always difficult to say no. I think that committee does a good job, and the Community Foundation does a phenomenal job as well with the arts re-granting, so let them do what they do best.
Agreed. But we, while we may not currently have any slated to come forward, those have tended to come at us kind of out of nowhere. We've also had some that have repeated, and then some extraordinary ones during the pandemic. Do we have a process in place for addressing those moving forward, other than just say no to everyone, and you have to go to the re-grant process?
Councilman Weber, members of the City Council, and, you know, I think a lot of what you saw last year was the impacts of COVID and not in the norm of what you would see come before this body. But I do think we did, we do probably need to address the funding level of these programs going forward. But we would recommend to these groups that come forward to go through the process of the Special Events and the Arts Re-granting programs that are in place.
I'd be fully supportive of just using the re-grants funds for most requests, but also there are unusual fantastic opportunities that might come before us. Could we entertain a process by which such unique opportunities would need to have an endorsement from the CVB or the Community Foundation, and that we might consider those only once they've received an endorsement from one of those organizations? Because there are extraordinary opportunities that arise.
Yeah. I think that's not a bad policy and something we can probably discuss further. Yeah. I mean, it would start at the same path and at least give sort of a layer before it gets to this body. So, it's not something I'm opposed to.
Thanks. Thanks for letting, for entertaining my questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Veen.
Yeah. Just as a follow-up, Mr. Weber, I know when you talk about additional events, the Greenway Takeover Festival is one that came forth last year, and we had to reduce funding for them. And I'm, you know, they may not be as early as others, but I can see that request coming back, and I was wondering what that opportunity is for that event or others that might come similar, to be able to at least apply for funding that would be potentially available.
I'll do some of the Greenway Takeover. Yeah, go ahead, Marine.
Yeah. Councilman Veen, Mayor Bochensky, members of City Council, in advance of this meeting, we did reach out to organizers of the Greenway Takeover Festival, and they do not plan to come forward for any additional requests this year.
I talked to him today, too, and I think he's kind of like waffling. I mean, he understands that, you know, he's done, he's put on his events over the years, you know, really without any additional aid. He did acknowledge that with the right amount of funding, the quality, the caliber of his event could improve, that would be of value yet, too. So, he seemed to be waffling a little bit on that, that maybe there would be some value. I can't speak for him, because he's not here, so.
Well, again, I think you hit, you know, that one was generally meant to be more COVID-related, so I think that's the idea, is to try to push beyond that. But President Sandy, maybe you've got an opinion?
Well, I'll speak for him. If he had known that there was an opportunity for funding, I can guarantee you, he would have been here in line, because if we, if there were an open process today for funding, an RFP process or whatever, if there was a deadline, and we said we had 100 grand were given away, everyone would have applied. So, I don't know if we're talking specifically about First Robotics right now, or if we're talking about the concert series, but I think in general, the process that you're discussing now for future years, I think is imperative that we implement it, because I don't think we should be forced to say no to people, although I'm happy to do so tonight, because I think we need to. I think in the future, any sort of, any sort of request like this should go, and if that means we need to dedicate adequate funding, then we need to figure that out, so, because that's not the fault of the people that are asking for funds for help.
And President Sandy, from me, that's exactly what the discussion has been. You know, there is a process in place. These have kind of been outside the process. We don't, the process is to go through these programs, and we want to steer them toward that and look at the funding level.
Ms. Mock.
So, have we considered just dedicating these funds back to those, those groups that give out these funds? Why are we, I guess, the problem that I have is that we're still talking about directly funding particular organizations or events. I'd rather see that money go back to, you know, the dedicated resources and have them go through that process. Have we thought of that? Could we do that? Because we, you know, that would essentially amend our budget for this year before we can readdress it in 2023.
Are you talking about these two items that are up today? Well, I think the timing was the issue, is just in order to get that back through, it could just take too long with the, and that's why going forward, I mean, this was kind of the last in type of deal. We want to fix it going forward, but that was at least, I think, the thought last time in the discussion for these two items specifically.
Could we invite any feedback from Becker or Julie at this time?
I'm sorry. Can we pick an item and discuss one particular item first?
The first item on the agenda is the First Robotics.
Well, and President Sandy, the reason I've been approaching it that way is because I was told we're not going to pull one and two. We're just kind of dealing with one, two, three, and four all together, but I don't disagree with what you said, yeah.
Well, I think if you ask Ms. Bomback or Ms. Rig, if they wanted more money, they're probably going to say yes. Is that true?
I was thinking more in terms of process, but...
Maybe if we dealt with one at a time. First Robotics received a 7-0 vote, and there seemed to be widespread feeling that that should move forward. The event's going to start in March. It's tied to our Alara Center. I think if we were to go one at a time, I think that had unanimous support, so I'd ask for a vote on that one first.
Yeah. President Sandy.
I agree. Timing is of the essence on this issue. The competition is in March, and I think dollar for dollar, the return on this is incredibly large for the City of Grand Forks and for our community. So, I will move approval.
Now, we got a motion to approve, that's item 4.3. Is that correct, Marine?
That is correct.
Okay. So, we're looking for a second, then we can go on to further discussion.
Second.
Got a second from, was that, we'll give it to Mr. Cavani. Any further discussion, item 4.3? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously.
And then 4.4 is the Third Street Events, the Hugo's Concert Series Funding Request of $50,000. And just as a reminder again, they did receive, since your last meeting, a $12,000 allocation from the Special Events Program.
So, the estimate would be for $38,000. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
President Sandy, please.
Ms. Dorset, can you confirm, last year, when HP came, I can't remember how much, doesn't matter how much, the money that we gave them came out of COVID funding, correct?
President Sandy, the money that was given to the, I believe it was the Obelisk and the Greenway Takeover Festival, yes, that was from CARES dollars.
Right. And so, it was discussed that it was, you know, time to rejuvenate our economy, give people in Grand Forks a good event, you know, we're coming through the pandemic, rah rah, sort of thing. And we had a fair amount of discussion, and I think they asked for 50, if I recall. I think we trimmed it down to about 25.
To 25.
And, great. I don't see the same, I don't see the same need for the Hugo's Concert Series. I wanted to move forward. I want it to be successful. I want them to sell lots of tickets and lots of beers, and everybody have a good time. I just, for me, this is one that I think should have gone through our process and Special Events funding. I know that, side question, has the National, has the National Act that was supposed to be announced on February 1st, has that National Act been announced yet? Have they picked?
It actually got pushed back because of...
Ms. Dorset, you come up to the mic, so the people at home can hear, and the rest of people in here.
Hi, Sarah Horak, with Third Street Events. We haven't been able to announce yet. We had a delay between the agencies agreeing or approving all of the graphics for the announcements. That's tentatively set for the end of this week right now, if we get the approvals back.
Great. Great. So, it sounds like things are moving forward, everything's going great, right? I know that the, and I mentioned this last week, two weeks ago, the vast majority of the revenue from these concerts is in alcohol. Ms. Horak has another business where she will be selling the alcohol herself at those events. I understand that her event company might not be making all the money on this project, but her other company will be, and so, I for one, I want them to move forward, and I don't have any ill will toward them asking. I would have asked, too, if I were in their situation. I just personally don't think that the City of Grand Forks should be doing this, so I will be voting no, but I will have no hard feelings if everyone else votes yes.
Thank you, President Sandy. Mr. Weber.
Very quickly, Mayor. Just a few moments ago, with no discussion, we passed almost all the other agenda items. Those totaled over $3 million. They were for, largely for infrastructure necessary, good infrastructure, I think that we made a right decision. But when we want to talk about doing things to improve the life of people and their enjoyment, we have very long discussions about $28,000, $38,000, so, yeah. Thanks.
That's not unique to tonight. Do we have further discussion or motion someone would like to put on the floor? Mr. Veen.
I just have a question. For, Ms. Horak, what's their option if we could turn down tonight?
I'm sorry. I didn't hear the end of the question.
If this funding were to be turned down tonight, what's the option? Can she come back and reapply through a different system, or it has to wait till next year?
This was kind of a one-time request, based on how the last year has gone for us. We weren't able to do our last two years of shows, so that put us in quite a bit of a, we got behind a little bit, so that's why going into this year, we wanted to be able to come out with a big lineup of shows. If we don't receive this funding, we'll have to cut back our fourth show. We haven't secured the final acts for the August show.
Anything further, Mr. Veen? Then we got Ms. Horak up. Does anybody have any further questions for her? All right. Thank you. All right, thank you. So do we have a motion, council, or further comment?
We have a motion.
Yes, sir.
No, we do, we have nothing on the floor.
I'll move approval.
Got a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
Can I just clarify what the motion is? Is it the staff recommended?
This is staff.
Which would be the 38,000, okay.
Okay. Got a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
A second.
Got a second from Mr. Cavani? All right, further discussion on the item? Vice President Mock.
I am okay with the motion as it is, if that's the way we wish, but I would be more interested in putting this 38,000 into our special events fund and having people apply through that. If you would entertain an amendment, I would offer it. If you don't want to amend it, then I'm ready to vote.
That's an interesting proposition, so I think what Ms. Mock is saying, let's give it to Special Events, let them decide, which they just put 12,000 into this in addition. Is that what you're suggesting? Let them decide if that's the highest need priority, and see if they can turn it on? Is it possible to turn it on that quickly? Come up, Ms. Rig, please.
Thank you, Ms. Baczynski, members of council. I don't want to be pitted against an event. I can tell you that there's no events under this program, even when we do get extra funding, that would get $50,000. There's no way we can do that, so that really needs to stay here, and I certainly wouldn't feel comfortable. We will not be able to give that event, based on our criteria and the evaluation that we've gone through, we could not give that event more than 12,000. There are plenty of other events that are just as deserving of 12,000, 15,000, 20,000. The one thing I would ask you to consider is the funds for the event funding program, and I'm sure the arts program are needed now. As we've talked about, this COVID has impacted a lot of budgets. Mine, very much, of course, as you know, were funded through lodging tax. So you will have more requests this year. I know some organizations have been talked to, but once it is publicized that events are getting additional funding, how would I tell them not to come and apply? But I certainly don't want to take money that could go to that event to put into the event funding pot.
And I think that's the challenge, where we want to tie this to some CPI metric in the future. I mean, we could fill that bucket with 250, 500, a million, 10 million, and it would get filled. I mean, there's no doubt that people are going to come and want to do those events and participate, so that's where we got to certainly find that balance.
And Ms. Baczynski, we are very cautious. Just because we have more money, we don't throw it at the events. As I said, we have our criteria that we go through, we evaluate budgets. Events that make profits don't get as much money from us as events that are maybe a nonprofit organization. We don't fund charitable donations, so it, the process that we go through, just because there's more money, doesn't mean we would just throw more money at events. It really goes through that criteria and that process.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Weber.
I'll let my motion stand and see how it lies.
Yep.
Sounds good.
All right, any further comment? All right, seeing none, why don't we go to a roll call vote, Marine? I have a feeling I know where this one's going to go, so.
All right, I do not believe Weigel is on, so Dockler?
No.
Weber?
Aye.
Mock?
No.
Cavani?
No.
V?
No.
And Sandy?
No.
Does not pass.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Moving on to item, the motion that is defeated. Moving on to item, what do we got?
4.10, Plans and Specs for Project 8473, 2022 Inlet Bag Contract.
Thank you, Ms. Mock. Did you have some direct questions on the item?
On 410, no, I'm ready to vote if someone wants to.
Okay. Got a motion on item 410?
We need a motion.
We need a motion, yeah. Got a motion from Mr. Veen, and a second from Mr. Sandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
That motion carries five to one with Mock dissenting.
4.14, Olive An and Fu Fang Pilot Updates.
Mayor Baczynski, members of City Council, I want to give you an update, and then a specific request I got from the Grand Forks School Board. I was, I just came from the Grand Forks Park District meeting. They say, thank you for all the work that we're doing, both on the Fu Fang project and the Olive An Boutique Hotel. And so they generally concur, let's move forward with the pilot. Obviously, it's in their best interest to do so, and further, they really appreciate all the partnerships that we have, to include, they talked about the feasibility study that they're working on with indoor facilities, and how do we create, you know, better facilities that we can hold more events, so. We even had the pickleball group there encouraging them on, so we got to hear some of that, too. We have spent some time at the Grand Forks School Board meeting, so we were there on January 24th to present. They did, the Grand Forks School Board moved forward with the Fu Fang Group pilot tax exemption. They approved it as proposed, 90% for the first 10 years, 75% for the second 10 years. They moved the Olive An Boutique Hotel back to committee, to the Finance Committee. Marine and I went over to, to visit again with the Finance Committee over at the School Board on February 1st, and they have a meeting coming up on February 14th, which would be next Monday, where they're going to consider the Olive An Boutique Hotel payment of tax. The Finance Committee moved 4-0 to approve the Olive An Boutique Hotel pilot, and one thing that's changed is, Marine and I were there, and also the developer, Mr. Giese, was there, and he obviously always does a great job. When it came down to it, first, we proposed, knowing that the school district needs funds sooner rather than later, we proposed instead of 100% tax exemption for just the Boutique Hotel from year six to 10, and then 80% for years 11 through 15, we proposed a 90-90. Same effective way to get to 90%. Mr. Giese stepped in and provided, you know, some of the reasons why he's moving forward with the project, why he needs a tax exemption in this particular case, has not asked for a tax exemption for any of the projects that he's completed in Grand Forks, whether that be apartment buildings, mixed-use developments, or the senior living center that he's going to soon complete this year, that's attached to a Sanford Clinic that he owns and then leases back to Sanford. Hasn't done that, so he mentioned the specific need, and we presented additional information to the School Board. Mr. Hodak talked about, you know, the annual daily percentage of the rooms that are full, what we're getting, and if you look at where we are today, even in a recovering economic climate for hotels, it's a much more concerning financial case than it was five, six years ago. So we showed them those numbers. We also highlighted the fact that a lot of commercial projects move forward without tax exemption, so sometimes people, you know, if we show up on a Monday night somewhere, they think, well, all projects go through, and we highlighted tens of projects that move forward without any exemptions. They don't see that, and so it's, again, it's the forest tree analogy, that there are many trees that fall in the forest that they may not hear. So we talked a lot about that. It came back that Mr. Giese did provide a compromise, that I think is probably the way forward on the project. So he said he can live with the 90% from year six through 10, and he also proposed an 80% tax exemption for years 11 through 15. However, he did say this, he's going to plan, right now he's proposed it at 81 Boutique Hotel rooms, he's going to propose it at 76, and that'll mitigate some of his risk. What he's going to plan to do is lower the number of rooms, and obviously, I think, not significantly, so we're not going to change the value, not significantly. He can always add the rooms back in later, when he knows there's more demand, but that's what he's going to do to mitigate some of the concerns that he has with making sure the project's successful over the initial years. That was well thought, and they were appreciative. I did highlight to them, the whole point of tax exemptions upfront is for developers like Mr. Giese to build as much value in that initial building as possible. Knowing that, in this case, the tax exemption's going to go over and get, be over in 15 years, the building's going to be there for 50-plus years, so let's try to, let's try to build as much value in the building as possible. I think Mr. Giese is still really compelled to invest as much as possible. Thank goodness he's from Grand Forks, otherwise, you know, we wouldn't have the project in front of us. I think he got that point across, and we got that point across. It was mentioned one more time, you know, there's a, there's a Boutique Hotel on Broadway in Fargo, attached to a high-rise, attached to our corporate headquarters, that received a 20-year, 100%, and for the fact that we should really be thankful for Mr. Giese to be in town, because he's getting less of an exemption than he, what would be asked for if somebody else came from out of town and wanted to build something. So great for Mr. Giese. I, the reason why we got a 4-0 vote coming out of committee instead of a 2-2, is that Mr. Carpenter and Ms. Mucial, on behalf of the School Board, asked that, in good faith, Marine and I would come back to U.S. City Council to get your sense, and also go to the County Commission, because we're going to go to the County Commission on both of these pilots next week, Tuesday, after, after the Monday School Board. And what they ask is this, in good faith, the sense is, they agree with the value proposition that we put in front of the School Board, that, you know, it's going to create jobs, internships, value. They get the commercial projects that have moved forward, they get the hotels are struggling, but what they, what the thought is, you know, the city of Grand Forks, though we have probably a wider burden of what we have to deal with day-to-day, week-to-week, with all the things that we have to work on, on behalf of the greater Grand Forks community, we get sales tax, we have other revenue streams that they're not able to get. So if you bring in a Boutique Hotel, certainly, we're going to benefit more due to sales tax and other economic impact, that revenue streams that they don't have. To that end, what they've asked myself to come to you as a School Board, and, or from the School Board to you, and also the County Commission, and I have highlighted the County Commission, I'll do that on their behalf, however, I'm a little more reluctant, because they have a juvenile detention, they have a jail issue, they got mill caps, and so they have their own, their own woe-is-them situation, too. But what they've asked for, as part of our increment, again, that 10% increment in year six through 10, and the 20% increment in years 11 through 15, are you willing, as part of the final approval that will occur on March 7th at your public hearing, are you willing, and Mr. Gossett said this is allowed for in the state statute, are you willing to negotiate a percentage of our incremental growth and provide that back to the School Board, knowing that they're in need of the funds sooner rather than later? We have other revenue streams, and I said I would come here and make, make the informed case, and just get a general sense at your, here in advance of their meeting next week, Monday, if you would be even willing to contemplate negotiating some of your incremental way, and provide it back to the School Board.
Mr. Fielan, that 10% increment we're talking about, is that roughly 6,900? Am I doing the math right there?
You did the math right. 6,930 is the estimate for that 10%. So for each 10% annually, about $6,900 for the city.
And Mayor Baczynski, and Council President Sandy, I talked to Mr. Sandy, too, on this. What I tried to explain is, you know, we just had this discussion, the city of Grand Forks, certainly, we are the receivers of the sales tax, however, we're the ones who are trying to move the community forward, whether it's events or arts or all these kinds of things, that we are willing to invest further into economic development, whether it's events and other things, that workforce, all those sorts of things. So I did say that, though we are receiving this, we are really trying to invest more in that, and they appreciated that, but they still would like to see more of the increment that would go to them.
Well, thank you, Mr. Fielan. I guess we'll open up for council comment. I mean, one thing to keep in mind, the city is responsible for permitting, you know, through construction, infrastructure, many other things that would not be on the hands of the school district or the county, so it's certainly a piece of that puzzle to consider as well. But, Mr. Weber?
I can only speak for myself, but we're reasonable people, and we're looking for opportunities to move this project forward. Of course, I'd be open to considering that.
President Sandy, you have any comment on this matter?
I find it mind-boggling that the 10% increment, which is $6,900, is what's potentially keeping a $30 million investment from going downtown. That's what, that's what the school district, in addition to perhaps our $6,900, they're getting 10%, right? Now, all of a sudden, they're getting 10%. They were a no, and now they're going to get 10%, and it's approximately $7,000 that was keeping them from approving this project. That's amazing. This is a perfect example of why the state law needs to change. It is ridiculous that that would be what would keep us from having a $30 million investment in our community, and so I certainly, they, as far as I'm concerned, they can have our $6,900, and I'll move approval, and they can have 6,900 from us. I'll give them, let's round it, we'll give them 7,000.
Mr. Gossett, can we actually give them 7,000? Can we really give them the increment?
Just so you, just so you it's clear, the way the statute sets up is that the, it's an allocation, if you normally do it, it's, you allocate it based upon what you normally would get for your general property taxes, so if you're picking up 30%, that's what they would get, for the increment, for the payment.
Thank you.
But the statute doesn't allow for the political subdivisions to enter into a separate written agreement to modify that, that allocation. I think that's what they're, that's what they're referring to.
Okay, let's keep it to that.
How about, I'm going to change my motion. I'm going to move approval at the different TIF, and I'm going to recommend separately that the city of Grand Forks cut the part, or the school district, a check for $100,000 out of economic development funds today and be done with this. I think what they're asking for, again, I just want to say, we did get a, it would have been a 2-2 vote, so I would say, there's generally a majority, I think, that want to support Olive An, and, you know, really what they're looking for is, you know, are we willing to negotiate some, just a sense, I wouldn't vote on it tonight, but just a general sense, are you willing to, to work with them in advance of the March 7th final approval and negotiating some of our percentage to them?
Currently, we have a motion on the floor, so I would have to entertain a second, at least at that point, if that's, or maybe that's not possible, Mr. Gossett.
I would prefer that a motion not be made approving anything, because we do have a public hearing set for March 7th to deal with the pilot agreement, and any nuances that may arise from that pilot agreement, so I think it might be premature to have that type of motion at this point.
Mr. Mayor, I'll withdraw my motion, but I think my point was made.
Yes, I think the point was made, and I think, I do think that they understand, and will make this happen. Ms., Vice President Mock.
Mr. Fielan, I don't know if you're the right person to even ask, but isn't part of going to these other taxing entities to have them vote and consider these items is to get their input on the items before we make any decisions? I guess, I mean, I understand the funds, and I understand, you know, weighing whatever they need to weigh, and, you know, we're reasonable people, we'll consider it when it comes forward, but I'm also interested in these other taxing entities considering the items and voting the way they need to vote, and making that recommendation to us, if that's the point of this law, we need to be getting their input, and not, I guess, doing further dealing. I mean, this is.
Let's, you might have to go to Mr. Gossett first, thank you, he's probably got statutory input.
I've got the statute in front of me. It's only in those circumstances where it's more than five years is the tax incentive, so we've got that in this set of circumstances. And the way the statute sets up is you have to give them a 30-day letter. They either have to act on it or not. If they don't act on it, then it's deemed they approve the incentive effectively. If they don't, they have to then send a letter explaining any reason for which the entity elected not to participate, so they have to give us the rationale, and then also advise if they're willing to negotiate the terms of the property tax incentive with the city, which I think that's what they're asking for at this point.
So would we make the final, I guess, give would be at that public hearing for that, for the City Council, which would be after the input from the school district? Okay.
Yeah, I'm trying to get a positive vote out of their school board meeting next week, Monday, and Council Vice President Mock, that's what they're saying, well, you know, the state statute tells us we should get engaged, and so then we start asking, and then, you know, the frustration within, you ask, but you don't really want our opinion. But we spent, we have spent a few hours at the Grand Forks School Board discussing this, and so I'm pretty pleased that we're at this point, because, you know, we got them re-engaged on the matter, and we tried to emphasize, and many of them emphasized, we have so many great partnerships that we're working on, let's not let a few thousand dollars get in the way of bigger and greater things to work together on.
President Sandy? I think, Ms. Mock, to your comments related to the law, I don't think our legislator's intent is what's happening. I think the intent was that the other taxing entities would have checks and balances, and make sure that the city isn't have checks and balances and make sure that the city isn't doing a crazy deal like Bismarck has done in the past. I think it's not, I don't think the legislators thought that the other taxing entities were going to be picking apart every single deal into the minutia. I thought, I believe that their intention was the county's going to look at it, make sure, yep, city's done their due diligence on this deal, and okay, city knows what they're doing, fine. Not, not, we need to parse through every single part of the deal and then try to figure out how to get more of this for ourselves than from the city. I believe that that was the intention. And I'm not saying that they're not doing what the law says. I believe they are. I just don't believe that that's the way the law was intended.
Any further comments on the same? All right, thank you. We'll move on. Marie?
4.15 is the Fu Fang Development Agreement Discussion, which does include additional attachments.
Thank you. Yeah, and if anyone else has further comments, we'll get to those right after. I think there's some items that are going to get presented.
Mayor Bochensky, may I?
Mr. Phelan, I'm going to say something here first, then I'll let you get in there. First, I want to thank everybody for coming out today. I've been in your shoes in the past, and I appreciate you coming out, sharing your concerns, and spending your evening here and sitting through quite a few other items you probably didn't care about. So, thank you for that. I did get to pay attention at the last meeting, and there's some items that I think that were called the question that had some easy answers that hopefully I can answer. But then tonight is a great opportunity for you to share more concerns and ask more questions and keep working through this process. The first thing that I think would be helpful is the, just showing the fact the city is not buying this land. This is a private transaction between the company and private landowners that are out there. They've negotiated separately from anything to do with the city. The company is proposed to be annexed because there's not utility capacity in Faulkner Township to provide the utilities that this company would need to operate. And then the next question would be the development agreement. Why is that coming first and not at the end of this process? Well, within that development agreement, there's 21-plus different conditions or stipulations that you would have to fulfill before this would come to fruition. And those conditions are going to cost money. They're going to cost the city money and the taxpayers' money. We need protection so that if the conditions aren't met or the company defaults, that they're paying us back for those dollars that are getting spent. So, we're doing this development agreement first in the best interest of the taxpayers, the city of Grand Forks, so they're protected. The last piece is, you know, we're going to get to, I'm sure I'm going to hear about China tonight, and we certainly wouldn't even be this far in negotiations with this company if we didn't believe that it's a legitimate company. They've been doing business for 20 years across the globe, and they've done business in 115 countries, including the United States. Is there more concern? Certainly. Are we going to look at that? Certainly. We've got two senators and a representative in D.C. that are probably, three of the biggest China hawks, I think, in the entire Congress. So, they've been fully aware of this project. They're looking into the project on that front. You've got the USDA, the FBI, NSA, the CIA, the FDA, Homeland Security. The vetting of this company is not, at that level, its board members, is not done by the Grand Forks City Council. We'll work with our federal partners and on that front. But coming here and asking us to vet international relations doesn't make a whole lot of sense. It's far beyond our purview, and it's something that we're paired with our federal partners. Those are a few of the items that I'll start with and let Mr. Phelan take it from there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Bochensky. Good thoughts. We had a really good work session last week, and so what we want to do is follow up with some of the things we heard. So, we'll brief those and then turn it back to you and anyone else who wants to talk. So, Mr. Gossett is going to start us off.
Yeah. You'll notice in your packet, what was posted is some revisions to the development agreement that occurred over the last week. Most of them are not really substantive, but I wanted to point out a couple of them. One is we've changed the term substantially completed and added not only substantially completed from a construction standpoint, but also added that for the Grand Forks plan, it has to be operational and producing saleable product. That's when substantially completed would occur. So, it's the construction plus those additional two items. That then impacts when the letter credit would be, would have to stay in effect. There are various provisions. That substantially completed can be found in section 1.65 of the development agreement, and then that permeates throughout the balance of the agreement. The letter credit has to stay in play until it's substantially completed. And also when the, those pre-special assessment costs would have to be paid when it's substantially completed. So, that change in the definition then affects those other provisions. Another change was at section 3.2.9 subsection 8H. I just, in my example, I'd use $10,000 per acre for the purchase price for the stormwater area, and Fu Fang has indicated it's a $26,000 per acre price, so I just inserted the $26,000 number to use their number rather than the one that doesn't factually tie to anything. So, and that just, I just ran the number and the mathematical calculation in that particular section. 4.72, you'll see that that's now been, 4.7.2, excuse me, has been removed. That was an oversight. It was one of those changes, if you recall, was a change where Fu Fang decided to upfront the cost for raw water and wastewater. That changed the dynamics. And this 4.7.2 dealt with a take-or-pay provision where the city was financing those raw water and wastewater costs. And since we're now having this escrow and they're upfronting those costs, that section no longer has application. And again, there were changes made to section 5.3 and 5.4. They deal with the rates that would be the estimated rates for raw water and wastewater discharging. The rates that were in the prior agreement reflected the pre-escrow change to the agreement where the city was funding or financing those costs. And so, those rates would be higher because there would be a debt service component to them, given the fact that Fu Fang is going to be upfronting those numbers logically had to go down. And that was, was one of those things. I was more focused on the escrow, getting that provision, and you can see when you go through it in detail, sometimes you overlook those more pragmatic changes that were necessary. There were a couple of internal reference correction changes, and the one that Mr. Sandy pointed out last week was there's not an 8.3, and so we made that correction as far as numbering is concerned. Also, a couple of documents that form the basis for exhibits for the raw water and wastewater. In those documents, you saw last week, the cost, the recovery method was through a take-or-pay provision. That's not the case anymore, given that Fu Fang is upfronting those dollars. So, you'll see that in those particular documents that, again, form the basis, the exhibit, it talks about the cost recovery will be through their escrow funds. Also, the only other change that they made was with the pilot agreement. There is, in my pilot documents, I usually put in an example as to how you're going to calculate that annual payment. And I had numbers that I didn't, weren't copacetic with the numbers that Ms. Doris had had in her spreadsheet. So, to make it consistent with one another, I just changed that. Doesn't change anything. It's just, it's an example illustrated, illustration in the agreement so that when people are looking at this document five years hence, they know how to run the math calculation. Also, just to give you an update, I am working on crafting the escrow agreements and hopefully have those done by weeks and sent out to Mr. Ahm for their review. The other thing is, I want to make sure you understand that I'm still waiting for some comments back from Mr. Ahm on the changes that we proposed last week with respect to the escrow and things like that, and then these as well. I haven't heard anything yet, which is not unusual. And hopefully, we'll hear from Fu Fang's attorneys this week yet.
Thank you, Dan. The other thing we attached, per the discussion on the permitting and the schedule, so we have an attachment called Draft Project Permitting and Approval Summary, and that is a new document. So, what we try to do is separate in between the, what is local permitting authorities going into the state permitting authority, and then finally federal. Mr. Brooks is going to anchor us here, and he's going to talk about some of those local planning and zoning permitting, what we need to do. And so, you can see in the first two bullets, the anticipated plating, zoning, and annexation timeline. Mr. Brooks will anchor us home on that. There's site plan and detailed development plan. We're starting to look at some more of the detailed development plans, and so we're getting more and more information on that front. The construction stormwater permit, that will be another permit from the city of Grand Forks Engineering Department. The industrial wastewater pretreatment permit. So, we just received some additional information. The city of Grand Forks has, if you're an industry in our community that discharges significant wastewater to us, we have an industrial wastewater permit, similar to what J.R. Simplot have. We have gotten some additional information. We'll be working through those particulars on that permit. On the other page is the building and fire code review and permit approvals. Again, we're going to be able to review the building, the design of this particular infrastructure. So, anything that touches the city of Grand Forks, we'll be reviewing what they're planning, how it's going to process, and so we're well aware of that. And there's two additional city approval requirements. We have the site odor and emissions study and then traffic impact study, so we're involved in those. And so, there's been concern about odor and emissions. We'll have to wait on some of the emission stuff because down in the state category, under the Department of Environmental Quality, Fu Fang's going to have to do some design, some modeling of their Title V air permit. So, once we, they move forward with what their Title V air permit, that'll provide us a lot of information to look at of various things from plumes to various other things. But we're going to have to wait till they work through the state of North Dakota on that until we gather more We anticipate right now, the second permit is called this wastewater discharge permit. We have a wastewater discharge permit, so all the wastewater that is collected in Grand Forks, whether it's residential, commercial, industrial, goes through our wastewater permit. We discharge north of Grand Forks and the Red River. Prelimarily, what we've seen from Fu Fang is they intend through their pretreatment system to be under industrial wastewater limits. So, that's good news. Obviously, we have to verify that, work through all that thing. So, it shouldn't be an issue on our discharge permit, but more details to come in that vein. The other one I want to talk about is the water supply permit, and Mr. Vian talked a lot about that. Mr. Gaddy's going to follow me here, and he's going to talk about what our permits are currently on the Red River and the Red Lake and how this may impact. We've got some really good slides to go over that with you, and I think that'll be good. Natural gas supply, and as you all know, Mayor Bochensky went to, down to this special session at the legislature. Thankfully, the state of North Dakota is moving forward with the Bakken pipeline. And in front of that, they're looking at how to serve Grand Forks County and industries like Fu Fang sooner rather than later. And so, on this industrial commission, I have timelines. They're going to have some metals due by March 1st and make a decision by the end of April through the industrial commission to serve Grand Forks County. And so, again, a lot going on to help serve this industry. And then finally, on the federal side, has been noted, we don't, we think most of the stormwater discharge is going to be to the English Cooley and not to our diversion, but we're going to have to work with the Corps of Engineers because that English Cooley diversion is part of our flood protection system. So, we'll have to engage on that. And there's a couple other federal requirements. So, that's just kind of highlights, and we tried to put in what quarter of this year. Really, all of these permits, we're going to have to really be working extensively on between the time of the signing of the development agreement through the balance of '22 into '23. So, that highlights that. The other thing we've attached as part of the discussion is, we intend to have you move this forward at the end of this evening, move this forward back to the committee of the hall next week Monday, and then back, hopefully, forward to the city council on February 22nd. And because next week, what we plan to do is to have further discussions on the development agreement and all the particulars. But we're also going to have a series of task orders we need to move forward with to move this project forward. We've attached some of those draft staff reports, and those relate to the wastewater lift station in Porousne, additional funds for the traffic study, program support services, and that's a large number. That's over a million dollar agreement. So, that's all the things that we're doing to help support, to ensure on behalf of U.S. City Council and the citizens of Grand Forks that we're doing all the particulars correctly, right? And so, that's really program support for all our consulting engineering, from building inspections, all those sorts of things to ensure that we really have a terrific project that gets delivered appropriately. Corridor utility right-of-way and routing. And so, this is a two-to-three-year build, and we need to start looking at rightaways and how we're going to place all this infrastructure purchasing right-of-way. There's a lot of work to be done in that vein. Wastewater treatment facility planning, we're already in the midst of improving, looking at the design of our wastewater treatment plant. We've reached out to our industrial partners, whether it's J.R. Simplot or others, of how can we best serve them, whether it's near their site or whether it's at the wastewater treatment plant. Those conversations are ongoing and how to serve them. We're really at the right time, at the right place with our AGR business corridor along Gateway Drive. And then finally, stormwater master plan, there's another agreement. So, what we intend is to bring all those task orders that will help solve some of the discussions that we're having within the development agreement. So, that's really moving the process forward. We have moved the process to this date using our administrative authority that we have, but we need your authority to move forward with additional designs, additional study, so that we can get answers here over the next year. Mr. Vian asked about risk assessment. So, we created this little spaghetti draft just to understand. So, we've been working with both, mainly with A2S and Blackin Beach, and what are the risks? And Mr. Vian has asked about this. I want to know what the risks are. And so, what we think is part of the development agreement, that we have encompassed most, if not all, the current risks that we have with this, within the agreement. And so, going down the left-hand side, you know, from infrastructure all the way to Fu Fang, plant operating risks, we think we've identified the concerns that we know of and that we've heard. And then on the right side, we have mitigation strategies. And so, if you look down this graph, I won't read it to you, but obviously, things like infrastructure risk, we're going to have agreements. And in the various green areas, you can see where we are trying to answer all the different parts of try to solve some of these concerns that we have as we move forward. So, again, I think all this is spelled out in what Mr. Gossett went over last week, has reiterated this week. These are all the things we're going to study here over the next year, but we need the development agreement in order for us to answer a lot of the questions as we move forward. And so, we'll further discuss this on Monday at the committee of the hall and address some of these concerns that we have. But right now, then, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Gaddy, and we've done some work on the raw water supply and what our raw water permits are, so to solve some or maybe to mitigate some of the concerns people have had in that vein.
Mr. Mayor?
One second. Mr. Weber, please.
That was a lot of information. We're just going to keep our questions till the end? Is that?
Yeah.
Well, I think if someone has a question, I think, on that chart, certainly council, why don't we go along and do it as they're up? So, why don't you pull that back up? Was it on that last slide, Mr. Weber?
It was.
Yeah, please.
The third-party review contract, can, who is that third-party review?
The third-party review, that's Blackin Beach. And so, as you recall, we're, when I talk about that support services, that over $1 million agreement, it ends up in, a portion of that ends up in this development agreement where if the project doesn't move forward, we have a way to receive some of that money back if, if some of these things. So, the important part of the development agreement is we're protecting ourselves. And we're going to work in good faith with Fu Fang, but if something happens, all the investment that we have is not for not as we move forward. So, it's really important as we start to really look at that. The third party, they're going to look at what kind of plant they're proposing to build, ensuring that it's, you know, how we'd want it designed, how we'd want it constructed, how we'd want it integrated with our-
They're involved in engineering with these kinds of plants all over the country.
I think the important part that Blackin Beach has been on both sides. They've been designers and they've been reviewers, and they're on both sides. The important part is, this is a tried-and-true technology, wet corn mills. Obviously, we went on a visit. We saw two of them that are owned by Cargill. This industry's been around for a lot of decades, doing what they're doing, and has only gotten better. So, it's a tried-and-true technology. However, we want to make sure that groups like with Blackin Beach, they can provide us really some really great insight on what we should expect as part of this. They'll support the emissions part of it, take a look at those. They'll look at those various analyses as part of it. They'll help our building inspection so that when we get particular pieces of equipment, designs, they'll be able to provide third-party support so that we have better assurance, knowing that we don't do this every day.
Very good. Just two more questions of them. And one of them is just, you mentioned additional info on the wastewater. Is that something Mr. Gaddy will be discussing? Is that something Mr. Gaddy will be discussing?
We just got that information today, and so, you know, as part of that wastewater treatment plant master plan that we want you to move forward with, that's going to be part of that study of looking how best to serve this industry as long as with our existing industries best. So we don't have all those answers today, but we're in the midst of having a conversation on that.
And then a very large question, you said you're hoping that we will move this to Cal next week. And what is this? Is this additional designs, additional studies that we're going to have presented to us? And that's what we're moving forward to Cal next week?
The council member, Weber, I'm hoping you move forward with a development agreement, take it back to the Cal, along with the pilot agreement. We'll have further discussion on Monday at the committee of the hall, along with all these, we'll call it appendices, that we've added on to it. The heart of the matter is to move forward with the development agreement so that we can, we can answer all the questions that people may have. Because time is short, we've got to get moving with answering those questions, and there's a lot of research that is going to have to be dedicated to this.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Vean, please.
Yeah. Well, Mr. Phelan, I really appreciate you putting this together. Probably the problem is, is I'm just seeing it for the first time now, and really not in a position to react, but the fact that we're working on it is really important and critical, I think, as we go through, you know, each risk. Some risks are higher, some risks are lower. The mitigation for ones are going to be different from each other. I think you've tried to kind of do this in a simplified form, but at least it's a great start, so I appreciate that and would love to make comments after I get a chance to review it sometime down the road. The problem for me just personally is time. I just, I ran off the copies of everything that I've got to try to review and try to do it in a short timeframe. That's the problem I'm running into. It's hard to say good, bad, or indifferent until you, you know, you get to spend some time kind of trying to understand that. You know, I think the city has done an amazing job, you're working at lightning speed to try to get a lot of technical data here for us. The problem is I'm not following along quite as quick politically to get into that yes or no type of thing. I think that's a little bit of where the dilemma that I think we have here, so to figure out how we can get the answers that we're looking for.
And Mayor Burchinsky, members of the city council, that's why I'm asking that decision, just to move it back to the committee of the hall. We'll have more briefings on this on Monday, we'll come back to the city council. And if you're not ready on the 22nd to move forward, we certainly can have additional meetings come February, March. My only hesitation is that we are going to the state water commission, asking for funding partner shares. The natural gas pipeline is moving forward, and we still need to get all those answers that are contained within that development agreement before we can keep coming back to you with more and more information to make more better decisions and provide you better insight.
Todd, one of the other things, as far as this last document you have on the permitting and approval, I appreciate you, we hired somebody locally, under the state, is the state DOT doing their own traffic study, right? On what they're doing on interstate and A-1, A-1 and Gateway Drive? We're not doing all of that, aren't they doing some of that?
Mayor Burchinsky and council member Vean, we're leading that study. So we're leading that on behalf of the community and the DOT, and certainly, so it's our project and we're leading that, and we'll be submitting to that for their review and acceptance. But no, we are leading that process.
The firm we're hiring is doing the whole thing, not.
They are.
Mr. Vean, can you turn your mic on? Thanks.
Okay, so that, we can make sure that that scope includes the same thing the DOT would do, it wouldn't make any difference, they'd probably send it out to a consultant anyway.
Yep. And administratively, we signed an initial agreement with a firm called Bolton and Mank. Why we authorize them to move forward with, is there already working on many of the federal traffic studies that we have going on right now? In particular, the one, the I-29 interchange project, they're working with the DOT on that. Mr. Bitner is the project manager, and he's had a long run of working with the DOT. So that's, was the quickest way, he has all those relationships, knowing what the DOT would want in that case.
All right, thank you, Mr. Phelan. Mr. Gaddy?
Mr. Phelan mentioned that, you know, of all the different permits and reviews that we've been working through, one of the key things that we've been looking at to date is water supply availability for the project. There were some comments, questions last week, some from Mr. Vean, some from the public around the amount of water that this project is proposed to consume. It is a significant amount of water, but what we did want to relay to you is that, you know, within the city's availability to serve this project with current permits, overall, what is available, what does the city have permitted, and generally just relate that to water supply available within the river. So we've just put together a few graphics here to demonstrate overall the project's proposed water use as it relates to the city's use and availability. This first graphic here that we're showing is just a summary of the city's typical use. So across the last 20 years, there's been, what times, there's been dry times in those last 20 years, but the city's typical average day across the last 20 years is 7.6 million gallons per day of water use for all existing domestic, commercial, industrial users of the city. What the Fu Fang project is proposing to use is approximately 6.6 million gallons per day. They've indicated that that would be on the higher end of their current estimate, but working to refine those values. But what they've initially indicated is about a 6.6 million gallon per day demand. So relative to the existing city consumption, it's not a small amount. What I do want to do is compare that to water availability that the community has, both in actual flows in the river, or both river sources, the Red and the Red Lake River, as well as what the city has permitted for use from those rivers. As Mr. Phelan indicated, we're not currently pursuing any water supply permit modifications with the project. We had a handful of conversations earlier this year with the Department of Water Resources around the city's permits and how this could fit in as some of our initial vetting and due diligence, and I'll get to those values in a moment. But if we just look at the Red and the Red Lake River and the water that essentially flows through the city of Grand Forks on any given day, what's indicated here in the green is what would be considered the city's 95th percentile flows. So this is based on USGS gauge station data, it's daily data across the last 100 years. Across the last 100 years, on a daily basis, on average, 95% of the time, we have 104.9 million gallons per day or more flowing through the city of Grand Forks combined from the Red and the Red Lake Rivers. The 99th percentile, so this is 99% of the time, across the last 100 years, we have 18.8 million gallons per day or more flowing through the city of Grand Forks from the Red and the Red Lake Rivers. So if you look at this, you know, on the 95% basis, that would say with a high degree of, you know, statistical accuracy on gauge data, there is way more often than not, you know, enough water to serve this project. You do start to get into some concern or areas of potential where you would be in that 99th percentile type of event of river flow within the river. The key there is that when you're in that mode, you know, there's other considerations that are at play. What are your peak day uses at that time? What else is happening for other priority uses on the river? How does that add up? What drought mitigation mode or drought management mode might you be in in terms of managing that flow level and ultimately working through those provisions? And then what also do you have available in redundant supply, which I'll get to in a moment, because the city has more than just the Red and the Red Lake River permit, you also have your Lake Ashdabula permit, which is water behind Bald Hill Dam north of Valley City that you participate or paid to participate in to have that water available from an emergency supply standpoint. This gets at that, those couple of comments that I was just making there. I did want to provide some context. Last year, we did have a pretty significant dry weather event in the summer of 2021. The minimum flow we actually saw passing through the city of Grand Forks last year was 128 million gallons per day. Now, there was flow from the Red and the Red Lake Rivers. There were some key decisions that were made last year as far as releases from Red Lake that helped make sure that there was enough water available. No water was drawn on from the Lake Ashdabula permits at that time, so there's water that's being released from Red Lake, there's water that's being released from Lake Ashdabula, there's other upstream reservoirs as well that help contribute to the daily flow. But even in a very dry event like last year, we still weren't really anywhere near even the 95th percentile type of event. So wanted to point that out. In addition to that, you know, there are other considerations as we look to the future of water supply availability. Just because the past 100 years looked this way, you know, there's a lot of change in use that's happened over the last 100 years. And so I'm not here to demonstrate all of the study that's going on in this regard. There is a lot of study that is going on as far as water use within the valley. Mr. Vean mentioned things like the Red River Valley Water Supply Project. I'll mention that in a moment, what the city's proposed nomination is within that project. But overall, if you just look at, you know, the statistics of river flow relative to the city's use and Fu Fang's proposed use, there's more than, you know, more than an adequate supply flowing through the city on a daily basis. As far as what's permitted, so there's what's available, and then there's what's permitted to be available. The city, and this gets to the conversations I mentioned we had with the Department of Water Resources here this past year, permitted available on the Red and the Red Lake River is just under 40 million gallons per day. So for the existing permits that the city has, there's more than enough for both current use as well as expanded industrial use within the city's permits. In addition to those river permits, I mentioned Lake Ashdabula permits. The Lake Ashdabula permit, if you looked at current use of the city, there's approximately 2.3 years of water supply available within that reservoir. It's just north of 20,000 acre feet of water that the city has available within Lake Ashdabula. The city is a priority permit on Lake Ashdabula. Clearly, you would need to consider what's happening in a drought. Again, back to the Red River Valley Water Supply Project, what that project is really looking at closely is in times of drought, you know, how much water would be there? How would we replenish that water when we start drawing on it, et cetera? But if you just look at current use, roughly, like I said, close to two and a half years, if we add Fu Fang's consumption in there, we're looking at just over a year of redundant supply. So should we get into the 99th plus percentile type of event, there is that excess supply within Ashdabula? And how we draw on that supply, all of that, there's a lot of nuance to that, but it is being studied within the Red River Valley Water Supply Project, as I mentioned. The last piece to this is really considering how do you keep that supply completely full if we get into a circumstance where we're beyond, you know, a year to two-year heavy drought? And that's really the heavy emphasis of the Red River Valley Water Supply Project. The city's current nomination within the Red River Valley Water Supply Project is for a roughly close to 17 million gallon per day total release from that project that would be released into Lake Ashdabula, and then the city would have the ability to draw on that in times of need. I guess, you know, just highlighting, looking at this, like I said, for a majority of the time, 99th percentile and above, the city has that water available. Should they not, you have your Lake Ashdabula resources available. And beyond that, Mr. Vean, as you mentioned last week, there's a lot of study looking at, should we get into, say, like a 1930s type of drought, which is what the Red River Valley Water Supply Project is being designed to accommodate? How much water would be available there? And are we still looking to be within our appropriate availabilities and permitted allocations in order to meet the needs of the city of Grand Forks? So with that, I would stand for any questions of the council, but just to hit on why we're not pursuing additional permits, we wanted to provide that little bit of context here this evening.
Any questions for Mr. Gaddy? Maybe a question for Mr. Phelan. City policy, if we were to be low on water, I would imagine residential users would be prioritized over industry?
Yeah. Mayor Burchinsky, really good point. You do have a policy that you've approved where we mitigate use of water, and obviously, we're going to try to save as much for domestic use, you know, essential use of water. And, you know, one of the tiers we get into, and whether it's in the third or fourth tier, is we have to start cutting off industrial water supply. And, you know, those are some pragmatic things, you know? If we're entering into a 1930s drought, we certainly have a challenge with agriculture. And certainly, we have industries in our community that rely upon a crop being grown in our communities, whether that's corn or whether that would be potatoes and variety of different things. And certainly, you have to think our industry would be much mitigated along with our need for water during those times. We certainly don't want to go back to a 1930s drought. It likely will happen, we just don't know when. But, you know, if you look at those, you know, we have plenty of water supply, thankfully, we're at the forks of the Red Lake and the Red River. Back in the 1960s, Grand Forks bought into the Lake Ashdabula supply, were the number one priority, I think, up and down the Red River. And then to supplement that even forward with an insurance policy is that Red River Valley Water Supply Project. And I know Mr. Vean has been heavily involved, but I think with the central gas pipeline, the state is ready to move forward with the Red River Valley Water Supply Project, knowing that if they're going to do value-added agriculture in the Red River Valley and move natural gas from the Bakken out to eastern North Dakota, they're going to need supplementary water to go along with that natural gas to ensure that we can continue to move forward in our communities.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan.
Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Vean.
Todd, do you expect the nomination to increase now that we brought this plant on?
Mayor Burchinsky and council member Vean, I think that's part of our, right now, when I look at that number, because you have to think of that 7.9 domestic, you have to look at that 8.9 MGD for industrial. You know, we do have in this number, it's a 40-year number, so we've got population built in that. We have, on a per capita use minimized over time, you know, we're using less and less water per capita than we ever have been. And we, as the mayor said, we'd be under mitigated water use at that time. And so I think we do have to take a look at it. We did, when you look at that industrial use, that 8.9 MGD, with the Fu Fang project, that probably takes up most of our future industrial load in One Felswo that we had built in over, you know, that 40-year time period. So on the industrial side, I think we need to now take a look at it. But the good part of that is, it does emphasize the need for state support to increase industry in the Red River Valley. And the other advantage Grand Forks has versus the Southern Valley is the river has more flow in it further north you go, which helps, we talked about that discharge permit, right? We can discharge wastewater, treated wastewater to our river system easier than you could down further south. You know, if you were down in Wapperton, they certainly have the wet corn mill that Cargill runs, but their river system is so much less flow, they're going to have a hard time being able to discharge more and more industry into their river. Grand Forks is at a unique and good circumstance where we have a wider river with more ability to, for affluent to go into our river than what we have in the Southern Valley. And you also have to look at the Southern Valley, has much more agri-business development than we do on the Northern Valley, especially when you look at ethanol plants and that wet corn mill in Wapperton.
Thank you. Continue, Mr. Gaddy.
Sorry, Mr. Vean, dear question. In the 8.9 MGD industrial nomination, that's not only for future, that's for current industry. And so I do understand project participation agreements are going to be discussed later this year with Garrettson Divergent Lake Agasson Water Authority. But if I just looked at that 8.9 MGD with Fu Fang project's proposed use and including current users while maintaining some additional capacity, I think you're going to have to modify that portion of the nomination for sure, but there still is the ability to do that. And I think the project has the flexibility to accommodate that.
Mr. Gaddy, do you think projects like this are going to, I mean, this project's been, as Ken knows or Mr. Vean knows, for how many years?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five years. And it's finally starting to get funded. Are projects like this going to light a little fire to get this? I mean, you're obviously just giving your opinion here, but this could give us an opportunity to have, while it is the size of redundant to the redundant, but it is a flow rather than a stock. Does it, in your opinion, does it give us a chance to start moving that along a little quicker so we have that level of protection?
You're saying our industrial projects, like the Fu Fang project, an impetus to spur increased funding from the state?
Well, to get it to move quicker. I think it's still a six to 10-year funding, it'd be nice to get that to six rather than 10 years.
I would hope so. You know, funding has picked up significantly in the last two by end. You know, we're. Uh, you know, we, we're roughly a hundred and twelve million dollars, I believe, into the progress of the Red River Valley Water Supply Project. And so significant, um, you know, significant headway has been made. That's about 10% of the, the project's current total estimated cost, so there's a lot of work left to do. But a lot of work has been started, and I do think projects like this start to show that we've been talking reality about what the needs are going to be in the valley moving forward.
Thank you.
If we could have Mr. Brooks talk about some planning and zoning items that came up last week, too.
Pull up the land use plan first. Uh, and this document, uh, which we're in the process now of updating, um, was last done about five years ago, it's the 2045 land use plan. And I'll pull it up here, we made it as an attachment. So as I said, that was a 2045, uh, done five years ago. Um, specifically, I'll, I'll look at this area here, so this is the industrial area that we have highlighted. Um, in addition, there was some industrial that's to the north. Uh, the blue that you see kind of going around here, that's the flood diversion uh piece. So inside of this area is all protected uh area, so um, as we go, uh, 27th up to 40th, there's a small piece that we saw it left as egg, we just didn't think uh we were gonna have a project this big, so that's why there's a small piece of egg that was around that tank farm, but otherwise entirely industrial. This is the, uh, what we looked at when we went to, um, anytime somebody comes, takes a look at wanting to develop in Grand Forks, they ask us what's in our future land use plan. Uh, and then that's what drives what our zoning's gonna be, so uh, with that, I'll, I'll show you the zoning map that's in this area. So again, here's the area north of here, uh, here's that flood diversion piece that we have. Uh, we have some existing industrial that's north of it, just outside of the flood protection area. Uh, there's a couple of, um, uh, industrial users that are up there. Um, and then south of that, as you're aware, uh, we have Simplot and, and Red River Bio Refinery and, and some of the other areas, uh, south of 27th. Um, and again, this whole area here is all planned to be industrial in the, in the future, so um, when we, uh, in the next month, we're looking to rezone um, and plat this area here, that'll come before your plan right now for March and April. Uh, those are two meetings, uh, requirements. Uh, what, first thing we do when we look to rezone, we look to see what was in the land use plan and make sure that it matches that, so in this case, we would call those a match and, and recommend moving forward. It doesn't, you know, still there's due diligence that's always done, uh, what's, what's being looked at, those types of things, so all of those will be on in the next few months with you, uh, with the, uh, the city council and planning commission. Uh, the other things I wanted to talk about, um, there's, there's been questions that have been asked of us of, of how far from residential areas. Uh, the closest one that we could, we could find here was the Corenta Farm, which is located right in this location here. Uh, most of you know that they're the ones who are in the process of selling off some of their land uh, to the west for industrial. Um, but that, that housing, uh, unit is a little over, uh, it's about twenty-three hundred feet from the closest proximity to, uh, the Fu Feng Project. Uh, and I went right to this, this corner here. Um, that, that's not unusual. Um, as I start to look at some of our other agribusiness that we have, Simplot, um, that we have eight houses within eight hundred feet, if you were to measure, um, from the north end of Gateway Drive down to about 13th Avenue North, uh, there's, uh, houses, housing units that are that close. Um, even as we look at the State Mill and start to add over to those houses to the east of there, you're getting into about 600 feet. Um, we are not unusual, unusual when you, when you talk about some of those distances. Even when I think about, um, American Crystal Sugar on the east side, they're about 800 feet away or, or less, uh, uh, from Fifth Avenue Northeast and some of the, some of the residences that are along there. Uh, and that's probably gonna be a, um, so that's, that's kind of what we see in terms of those distances, just to, uh, as we start to get some of those questions. Going back to the, the land use plan, our other residential areas that we had planned, um, we didn't have any others up in this area that were within that flood protection area. Um, we were keeping residential, uh, away from this area because we were planning it to be industrial, so um, there are some rural, uh, residentials that we anticipate remaining in some of those areas as well, so happy to answer any questions that you may have on that. Oh, sure. Apologize, the one other one I'll show you. We, we attached this one as well, so here's the, here's, uh, the flood protection up on the north end, 40th Avenue. Here's the Fu Feng Project in yellow. And we did highlight some of the undeveloped, uh, or some of the developed lots around that project, and I also wanted to highlight in black here is current city limits. So we're budding up against city limits in some of the corners, the tank farm that was in the southwest is bumped up against. And, uh, some of, we are, we're actually up to 27th, uh, where the old Quest Building, uh, was. Uh, and now that's an industrial piece that went into there, some manufacturing. And so, um, we are close to this area, it's been kind of on our radar for a while, so um, I think I covered everything, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Just one quick.
Yeah, Mr. Vian, please.
Do you, do you expect 40, North 42nd Street to be extended all the way north a mile up past 27th?
No, uh, I don't, and, uh, one of the reasons I'll, um, let's see if this highlights it. Um, that, that, North 42nd's gonna be a little difficult uh, to run that right up against the railroad tracks, I think. So, um, I think Al and I discussed a little bit, uh, not anything in duration, but it could be that we, we need a spine of a road that goes west of 42nd between, maybe it cuts the line between 42nd and the interstate, and then that's a befed industrial property lots on both sides.
Yeah, 'cause I was just gonna say that property wouldn't be accessible if we don't have a, I mean, you can't remove access as a part of.
Yeah, and I don't know if we're looking to cross, even when we were to get to the north side, then we'd be trying to cross our, the ditch as well, so.
You'd have to have a cul-de-sac.
Yep, correct, yep.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Brooks? All right, thank you, back to you, Mr. Fionn.
I think we'll turn it back to you, Mayor Burchensky and City Councilman.
Great, well, now, if there's any just general questions by council, as people have been waiting a long time, so I wanted to get through the, the comments. Seeing none, I'm gonna go list, is there anybody else out there that, that wanted to speak that hasn't filled one out yet, if they can? Oh, right there, if, uh, sure, if you could grab that. Todd. Thank you. All right, at this time, um, did you want to have anything done with these, Todd, before? I mean, you're asking to be moved to stick to, to the Cal for further discussion, and do we need an actual motion for that?
Generally, uh, the mayor and I work on an agenda, we play placing on the agenda, but it would be, I just wanted to give you a forecast, so you know what's, what we're gonna do next.
Okay. Well, it's.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, the, uh, just to Mr. Vian's comment about how much information there is, the, we're, we're actually getting this information about a week longer than we traditionally would for projects, maybe not of this magnitude, but other things that come Cal, we'll get them on Friday and are expected to take action on them on, on the following Monday, so we've, we, we have been provided additional time, whether it's enough time to take action on, on Monday or not, I, I don't know, but I do appreciate that. We're, we're being given the heads up here, and, and thank you for that. And Mr. Gossett, really appreciate all of the work on this, an amazing amount of work, thank you.
Thank you, Council President Sandy.
All right, so I got a handful here, uh, before we start, we got, uh, Mr. Coachman, I got you on the, up, uh, top of the list here today. Please.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and ladies and gentlemen of the council. Um, I am going to ask a couple of classification, um, questions. Um, you mentioned last week that you talked to the base commander?
Yes.
Okay, is he gonna give a letter stating that they support this, or just a verbal thing?
I don't think the base commander has authorization to do that. Certainly you're welcome to call the base commander and ask him.
No, that's, that's what I'm asking, uh, making sure that all the bases were touched, uh, the base.
I, I wouldn't have gone on record publicly saying that I spoke with the base commander if I hadn't.
So.
And I, I certainly wouldn't put words in the base commander's mouth had he not said them to me.
So is he gonna put it in a paper form or a letter form stating that?
I don't know the rules that the Air Force has. I know that, for example, if he were my subordinate and he were writing a letter on behalf of the federal government, I certainly wouldn't appreciate that.
Well, that's why I asked the question, because you said you talked to the base commander, implying that you, he okayed it, same with you.
No, I, I never implied that he okayed it, what I specifically said was that he had no objections.
Okay.
Uh, the, the base commander doesn't provide approval.
Okay. And you stated also you had communications with, uh, the base commander also, right?
For the record, Mr. Coachman, I didn't say that last week.
Okay, what did you say? Because you did, you did mention the base commander.
I did not.
Okay, all right.
Just, uh, just to clarify, it is, it is the wing commander, not the base commander, there's a distinction, thank you, sir.
Uh, so another question I have is, um, I know you mentioned about the company, the FBI, DLJ and all this here, but has anybody contacted the Department of Defense?
I have not, on behalf of the city of Grand Forks.
Okay, has anybody contacted the FBI?
Not that I'm aware of.
Mr. Mayor, you're talking about this is a reputable company that has the FBI and DLJ, but no one has contacted any of these agencies.
That's correct, I said it's a legitimate company, I didn't say whether it was reputable or not. But, uh, what I'm getting at is that we've had conversations with our senators who lead us on a federal level.
Well, I know, as far as I can tell from our senators, um, they are not.
Excuse me, I should, I, the way I said that was probably incorrect. I didn't say reputable, I said legitimate, and, and we believe it is reputable. I mean, and we, we are working with the senators, we've spoken to them, that is our federal representation as a state.
So have they done any background check with the FBI or DLJ with these, this company?
We can certainly find out where they're at in their process.
Wouldn't that would be the next phase as soon as possible before we go down the road? Because if they're not reputable, you're dumping money into a company that has not been vetted. Basically, the FBI came out even last week stating that of all the different cases they have, from drug, whatever, um, different cases, Chinese espionage is the highest thing. Every twelve hours, they have a new espionage case. So within between here and last week, fourteen cases. I think vetting this company is the key. So, obviously, no one's dead vetting, you're going by hearsay on a communist country, uh, company. Not very wise, I'm just saying, not very wise. Has anybody contacted the US Secretary of State's office? And what they say, have you?
We have not, and I'm not aware of anyone from the city of Grand Forks who has.
So no one's contacted the Secretary of State's off, the US Secretary of State's office on that. Again, I mentioned with Mike Pompeo last week, uh, what the Chinese companies are doing. So you're failing on all these different grounds.
So Mr. Mayor, is that three minutes? Yeah, if you, if you got, we'll let you continue, continue, but.
Okay.
I think it's helpful, I think you're, you're giving us helpful things and, and further things that we can be doing.
Thank you. Um, I have a question out, Mr. Dana, uh, on this here. And doing the research here, or looking at the bottom, that you manage and did business with the Chinese flight training, right?
Yes, sir.
So you work with the Chinese government, or individuals, or what?
I work with several Chinese airlines.
Okay, um, let me ask you, um, have the CCP or any agents of the CCP ever promised you anything in your past, present, or future financial?
Certainly not.
What about you, sir?
They have not.
Mr. Mayor? They have not, sir, and I, I, you can go down the line, but I think, um, at this point.
Nope, just, just, just choose three, I'm, I'm not asking them.
All right, thank you. If you've got, well, are you sure, are you sure? If you've got a final, why don't you close with a final comment, I think we're, we appreciate, you've waited a long time, so we, I think we've given longer than the normal, which I appreciate your comment, so.
Okay, um, have any US government officials approached you for any benefits in the past, present, future to make sure this happened?
Related to this project or in general, anybody, ever, any project, never.
Okay, you, sir?
Has you ever been bribed?
Have you ever been bribed by a government, uh, US government official for this project or any other?
And we did, we did respond through a public submittal on this particular project, and we're, are, that's how we are here today. So it's a widely known project that we've solicited, we've participated, and we competed against, so.
Well, the reason I asked it because.
It's a widely known, uh, project, um, that we worked on through the state of North Dakota.
Well, the reason I, I asked that is because I'm kind of baffled that you haven't did your research on areas and you're trying to keep from reaching into the area as far as, are they a legitimate company, are they really backed by the CCP? And it just baffles my mind that you're pushing this so hard when the people don't want it. And it's like, okay, what, what profit is it coming out of except for personal gain? Because it's not really helping Grand Forks. And what the sad part about this whole thing is, because it is a communist, uh, communist, uh, company, this book, who's gonna enforce it, uh, with the workers there? Because here, this is a right of religion, free speech, petition, uh, rights of healing, everything that is contrary to what we believe as US.
Mr. Coachman, uh, thank you for your time, I, there, there will be American workers there. Um, I appreciate your time, we've got a big, big list, so I'd like to hear from, from other people as well.
I have questions, and I'm gonna give in my three minutes.
I'm sorry, that's, we're not.
I'm in Wardmore, I can pass my three minutes on.
I don't know if we're, I guess I'd refer the city attorney on this one.
Um, I don't think you can pass three minutes off to other people, you get three minutes to comment. Um, also, it's comment period, not a deposition period.
No, but.
So if, if, I think the, appreciate having, allowing the citizens to make as many comments as they want. Uh, I don't know if it's.
Where does it say you cannot give three minutes to somebody? Does it say it anywhere?
It's been a city policy from before, but before my time.
Is there a policy where it's so that you can't give three minutes to somebody else?
Uh, this is the city attorney's opinion, I'm gonna trust him now. Mr. Coachman, I, I appreciate you coming here. These institutions, you gotta respect this institution as well, and I appreciate your time. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and, um, people?
Well, is it, is it Mr. Mushitz, would you like to go next, since you got called on? Is that you, sir, yeah?
Yeah. Thank you. Mayor, city council members, my name's Robert Mushitz, I live and work for. Um, I guess the biggest thing that really, really kind of turned me off on this whole project was the fact that you guys started talking about this in 2020. People are sitting in this room that live in Faulkner Township, some of them have businesses and have been here for many years. But yet you've talked about this since 2020, and they were in the dark, I was in the dark. But yet you've talked about this since 2020, and they were in the dark, I was in the dark. We all pay taxes, and a lot of them. We love our city, and we wouldn't live here for God's sake, it's, you know what it's like out there. Mr. Sandy, not trying to pick any trouble here, but there was a lady that asked if you could turn up the volume, and you said no.
No, I don't believe we, I don't, I didn't think we had the physical. Right, yes, but that's not because I didn't want to, but because we physically can't.
That's not true, Mr. Sandy, because I walked in the room, the little gal's sitting there, and she turned it up.
Certainly, my apologies. No, I didn't think we had the capabilities because.
But anyway, you saw the point.
We've been talking about technology issues in this room.
I'll get back, because I only got three minutes.
Yes, thank you.
We have a labor shortage in our town. I own a business, I'm gonna turn the key and walk away because I can't find anybody to train to do what I do. I call tons of my business friends, they can't find workers. But yet, the only positive thing I've seen of this communist China company coming was they're gonna bring 250 jobs for people that, we don't have the workforce here. I mean, it saddens me. People are going down. We've got Scotty's on Washington, why'd they go down? They couldn't get help. We got that Chinese place that was over on Columbia Road, they went down because they couldn't get help. There are more businesses struggling now to get labor. Now, that question was brought up, and you said, well, these are engineering jobs. Where do you suppose they're gonna come from? Communist China. I'm just saying, the pluses for this, I make columns when I do business deals, pros, cons, okay? I'm looking at the cons, about a page and a half long. I'm looking at the pros, jobs. That means we went to the con list because we don't have the workforce in town anymore. Now, I don't know if it's because our lovely president gave free money to people, or if our parenting skills have gone down the hill. But either way, they're not working. So bring in more jobs, so tell them, what would they do? If they built a billion trillion dollar plant, they'll bring them from overseas. That's, you know, that's my opinion and my beliefs. We all pay taxes in this building, and we do elect you. So by rights, we are your employer. And I mean, I'm not trying to tell you something about government you don't know, and I respect every one of you for doing your job, but you have to, number one, keep people informed. We have not seen a dollar figure for the amount of money that you've already put into this program, let alone where each of it goes. Neither has it, maybe it's rumor, maybe it's not, but you're actually using COVID money for some of the infrastructure. Now, to me, COVID money was to help the people that suffered through COVID. That would be my take, okay? But it's gonna help a Chinese communist company come to town by building, now we had to do the infrastructure, and we don't get me wrong, it had to have updates, but that's on us. The COVID money should have helped Scotty's, it should have helped all the other businesses in town that suffer. Not, not help bring in a Chinese communist company, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Alright. Next, I got Dennis Cadillac. Mr. Cadillac?
Hope you leave me for the answer, you know, I'll pad everybody else when I'm done. But I'm gonna have to make this quick, so you're gonna allow me only three minutes. You know, I got more than one call about the way I was addressed by Sandy last week, you know, and it just goes to show how much, how he expresses his feelings towards people. And you know, I'm not gonna take any cheap shots here, I'm just gonna state the facts, and the facts are the facts. Because the Chinese are gonna bring in their own 200 workers to run that plant. And, you know, what you do with our money is our business. You have no money of your own, and everybody in Grand Forks needs to know this. You're not some magic entity that creates your own money. You use our money and you do what you want with our money. And you plan on bringing in some outer country communist firm, giving them our money for the infrastructure, taking all these people that have built businesses over the last 50, 60, 70 years, and destroy their businesses to get the infrastructure money out of them. Because I've already heard what it cost the guy that owns the farmland next to the road you built for Beto Refinery. And you know, Mayor, you dress nice, I like you, but the only last time I seen you was at the military deal at the veterans' park, you know? I didn't see you here last week, I did see we did do the pledge of allegiance, thanks to those little children. That should maybe be done every week here. We should probably start thinking about the things we have in this country instead of what we can bring into this country. Because what we have right here is very, very valuable. What you're trying to bring into this country, we don't need, we don't want, and it's a horrible insult to the people of this community when you people are doing this. We don't wanna be here, we wanna be out running our businesses. The last time I had to deal with you people, I got lied to, cheated, and all I did last time was ask Sandy if I could be treated honestly and above board, and right away he jumped up, "Mr. Cadillac, there's nothing I can do to please you." You're wrong, Mr. Sandy, resign, leave Grand Forks. If we had deep pockets like you, Mr. Mayor, we'd buy this out and hold it together just like you did the apartment buildings in your neighborhood, and I applaud you for that, sir, that was great for you. Because that's the way a citizen should be able to do, is keep his own neighborhood clean, and something that he wants to raise his family in, you know? I was hoping to start a second generation out of my business. I'm almost retired, but I'm not gonna be able to get retired thanks to you people. My business is gonna get destroyed, and I'm gonna have a lot more time on my hands, and I'm gonna be sitting here, and I'm gonna listen, because I sat here and listened about all the tests and all the people, get that wildlife throwback in here. Because you better let her know that the holding pond's gonna be twice as big in a couple of years. And then you better figure out what's gonna happen to the other 3 million gallons that they're not putting back in the drain, they're taking six, but they're returning three. A good portion of that will be steam. And do you know what's gonna happen with corn steam and airplanes out at the base when the wind turns that direction? Have you ever seen what happens with a deep plant when it turns around direction? You guys have never done a study on that? You can't do a study on that. You're gonna run into things that you never dreamed of, and you are literally destroying this community.
Thank you, Mr. Cadillac. We got Mr. Maticek.
Sorry. I don't mind following you, Dennis, not a bit. Mr. Mayor, council members, Frank Maticek, 4150 Columbia Road North. I'm gonna tone it down a little bit just for Mr. Sandy, so he doesn't have to listen why Faulkner doesn't want it, why we don't wanna listen, why we don't wanna tell you about the odor, why we don't wanna tell you about the water usage and traffic problems. I wanna talk about terminology. Last month or last week when I was here, we had an egg park, which we didn't have an egg park, but you guys said we did. Now I'm hearing that this is going to bring value-added agriculture to the agriculture community, this plant is, okay? Do you guys know what value-added agriculture is? It's American crystal sugar, where the farmers grow the product and own the company. It's associated potato growers, where the growers own the potatoes, grow the potatoes, wash them, market them themselves. It's American Angus Association starting a certified Angus beef program, which has helped my farming operation tremendously by increasing the value of my breeding stock and beef, my beef that I sell. And then there's the farmer's co-op elevator in Thompson, where I sell my corn and soybeans. They give me a fair price for my product, and at the end of the year, I get a dividend. I get a dividend because it's a co-op and I'm part of the ownership. That's value-added ag. The brightest star of them all is the North Dakota State Mill. Look at that, they pay the highest price for wheat anywhere in the country. And they take the profits, give profit sharing to their employees, and the second half goes to Bismarck for everybody else's benefit. And then the real, the real value-added agriculture is stuff like this. I see Mr. Spruils here. Paul Spruil has three daughters. They grow milk and produce his pots to right here. That's value-added agriculture. If you think adding a couple cents to a bushel of corn for this processing plant is gonna be value-added agriculture, I don't know, you better think again. And I wanna close real quick, it might be a little corny, but there's an old cowboy code, and it goes like this. If it's not yours, don't take it. If it's not true, don't say it. And if it's not right, don't do it. This isn't right, don't do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maticek. Alright, I'm not sure how to pronounce the last name, Ray G. Uo. Thanks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Bochansky, city council members. My name is Ray G. Uo, 5730 Orkiz Circle. I'm standing before you tonight to express my genuine concern regarding this plan. Without any context, my voice must be dismissed as one of those with extreme ideologies or prejudice. Those ones are unable to adopt a global economy and/or change. I'm a first-generation Chinese-American. I earned my citizenship through the service of this country. I graduated from University of North Dakota and currently attending grad school at North Dakota, and I also work at UND Aerospace. At the same time, I'm serving honorably in North Dakota Army National Guard. When I was living in China, I remember vividly of poverty that just loomed all over our communities. In fact, my family survived the Great Famine, where cannibalism is not uncommon among the people, but the government is handing out food stamps and dining like kings. We survived the Chinese Cultural Revolution, where 7 million people, own Chinese people were slaughtered by their own government. History books are burnt. We have saw the rise of modern China, we all benefit from it, where we saw a huge influx of middle class, as well as amplified corruption. One thing in common all throughout these three generations is no one can criticize the government, nor its officials. After experiencing corruption firsthand, where I almost lost my mother, we escaped to the land of the free. Here, the God-given right of free speech is protected by the Constitution. Although my voice and opinions tonight does not reflect any organization I'm associated with. I hold my oath and allegiance very dearly as a father, a citizen, and a soldier. It is then my duty to stand up when I witness America's life is threatened, life, liberty, and justice is challenged. If we look back through history, very recent history, through technology, intellectual property, or tactics, one thing that Chinese is really good at is copying. So here's a couple important lessons the Chinese learned, I have learned that through history classes in China. May 1800s, China has fought and lost two wars over opium. Shanghai becomes a paradise to Western colonies, and Hong Kong has been taken, Hong Kong's sovereignty has been taken for 99 years. Not to mention, Port C of Macau is under Portuguese control since the 1500s. Number important lesson the Chinese learned is importance of strategic territorial claim in order to become a world dominant power. This is clearly displayed over Taiwan, as well as the islands and waters in South China Sea. Recently, the Chinese Belt and Road Initiative is nothing more than territorial claim by peaceful means. Sometimes out of wars, there's the greatest general acquire victory without even fighting a battle. The more you're able to acquire what you desire through peace, the more powerful you become without resistance. This is exactly what China did to Sri Lanka. They offered $6 billion to the Sri Lanka government to build a seaport, they brought their own construction companies, they brought their own construction workers as well engineers, 15,000 acres of land to build a port. When a country cannot pay them back, guess where the Chinese government did? We're gonna lease this land for 99 years and we'll have control of it. If you're looking to report lately to just renew it for another 99 years, so almost 200 years of foreign control. We can easily find patterns and examples throughout Africa and Middle East, where they exploit and deplete a resource of a foreign nation and send directly back to China. We all know what happened as soon as we withdrew from Afghanistan, Chinese government was the first one to send a representative to mine the $3 trillion of lithium. Guess where that's gonna go? They're gonna sell it back to the United States. You probably ask yourself, why is this relevant? Let me ask you a question. Based on their track record, who is to say they're not gonna do the same with this plan? Who is to say they're not gonna put the city in such debt and that they will offer you to pay off the loan in exchange of more land and occupy at their discretion? The second lesson is hatred to America. The United States was one of the eight national alliances attacked Beijing in 1900. They spent months, months hauling out tons of natural treasure, gold, silver, valuables, flammable evidence. Americans have fought the Chinese in Chinese Civil War, in Korea, and in Vietnam. Like I said, generations of Chinese pupils have been taught Americans are evil, Americans not to be trusted. China does not trust America, it is not our ally, and overseas dealings is only to their own best interest, at the expense of other nations' people, resource, and governmental sovereignty. Let's say we push this plan through after all the investments from city, state, county, as well as COVID relief fund. Let's say we just spend all the money as an investment to wreck a foreign entity, it will cost almost $100,000 per sustainable job, as the slide showed. What if, what if after 20 years, after the tax incentive ran out, they wanna pack up and leave because we couldn't have come to another agreement, like the fell-through deal with Amazon? What if it's FuFeng's strategy to drive out their stock value in Hong Kong exchange in the last minute? How much tax will the city, county, and state raise in order to pay off their loan? Gentlemen, ladies, before me, how much of your income are you willing to donate to pay off this loan? Why can't we spend these $10 million to build infrastructure that can support American companies? I could have a whole list written down, but I feel like my time is running low. Furthermore, the sheer amount of natural resource that FuFeng consumes is alarming. Just using last year's example, if the city had to ask residents to conserve water due to drought, and the farmers are suffering last year all year, and government budget had to sign an executive order for truckers to bring natural gas. I fear the consumption of this plant will create a similar situation like in California, where residents are fined to use water, while the majority of the resource was used by almond, olive, and avocado farmers. We talked a lot about the environmental impact. We really need to confirmation that the OK has done a study from North Dakota DNR, Minnesota DNR, as well as EPA.
How much you got left, Mr. Yu?
All right, give me two more minutes. Did you guys know hydrogen sulfide is a colorless, poisonous, corrosive, flammable gas? The citizens are not benefiting from this plan, but we're essentially planting a bomb into our city. Mr. Mayor, are you willing to expose your family to poison? According to the USCS report, North Dakota's number 13, so I wonder why the company chose North Dakota? Is it because we're near two Air Force bases? The two additional places that you looked at, Blair, Nebraska, is very close to an Air Force base, Fort Dodge is military base itself. Have we forgotten the 180,000, 180,000 acres bought, purchased by the Chinese general that wants to tap in our energy grid? It is also within 100 miles of an Air Force base. It is easy to find the executive chairman of FuFeng Group, Shi Chunli, is heavily involved in the Chinese Communist Party, he is a member of Congress. So I think it would be to everybody's peace of mind, the credibility of government officials for Colonel Curry, as well as Colonel Gresky, to sign a security memo stating that the project does not and will not pose a security threat. I'm going to give you two quotes, I guess to end my time with two quotes. First one is by John F. Kennedy, "The very word of secrecy is redundant repugnant in a free, open society, and we as a people inherently historically oppose the secret societies." And we, as a people, inherently, historically, oppose the secret societies, to secret oaths and to secret proceedings. It is very disappointing to find beloved city and state have reached this stage of agreement with FuFeng in secret. It felt like betrayal." Congressman Ron Paul once said, "What if my concerns are completely unfounded? Nothing. What if my concerns are accurate and become reality? Nothing good." So, but by God, I sincerely hope my worries are wrong, and this deal brings prosperity and profit to the community. But I hope everyone in front of me tonight will take my words seriously and make decisions with extreme caution and fight for the well-being of Grand Forks and its surrounding communities. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. All right. We've got Mr. and Mrs. Perkins. So I'll let Mr. Perkins decide if he wants to let his wife go first or second.
Mayor Burchinsky, I don't think we've met before. I'm concerned, and I sent an email to some of you last week, that people seem to be rushing forward on this project when there's a lot of unanswered questions. Mr. Phuen told us he's going to bring a whole bunch of more information next week, and I expect it could be that way for many weeks before all the answers are available. And we don't even have a pro forma. You, Mr. Weber, told me the other day, he thought this was a tremendous opportunity for Grand Forks. I've not seen any financial statement that says that. We haven't seen one yet. And there's so much that needs to be done before this is considered, and yet we're being told we need to hurry. I heard that word hurry, and time is short, was said tonight by several people. I just want to say, the biggest economic development project ever in Grand Forks, which is going to double water use and natural gas use, maybe shouldn't be decided in a hurry. And that's my first message. But my second message is, I don't think this project should go anywhere anyway. We're talking about doubling the amount of natural gas we burn in this town, which will make Grand Forks the number-one greenhouse gas polluter in our part of the country. We are going to be contributing substantially to climate change at a time when all the experts tell us we should be decreasing fossil fuel use, we're talking about increasing it. Grand Forks should have a plan, like many towns, cities, states, and countries around the world, for decreasing greenhouse gas emissions. We don't have one. We're talking about increasing them. And if our city goes through with this plan, shame on us. This is a bad idea. It should not be built. It's an immoral project for that reason alone. And I urge you to reject this as soon as possible, so we can get to thinking about something that will help our city and not harm the world at the same time. Thank you, sir.
I'm Betsy Perkins, 5571 Charlie Ray Drive. You've been estimating the cost of this project in dollars, but you also need to consider the environmental costs. There's a lot of costs that you, I hope you're thinking of. What are the environmental impacts of the building materials of the plant itself? What are the environmental impact of widening and paving the roads and their continual upkeep? What are the, what is the environmental impact of withdrawing so much water from the Red and the Red Lake Rivers? What is the environmental impact of growing the corn, the fertilizers and the pesticides that will be used? What is the environmental impact, excuse me, of transporting the corn to Grand Forks? Dexter already, Dex already talked about the CO2 emissions. What other emissions are they, and what are their environmental costs in creating the product? What is the impact of these emissions on the health of the people of Grand Forks? What is the environmental impact of transporting the animal feed to its destination, as I heard it won't be used here? What is the environmental impact of raising more methane-producing cattle? Will there be an environmental impact statement? I don't have the answers, but it's your job to make sure these questions get answered.
Mr. Leek, Todd Leek?
Good evening, Mayor Burchinsky and remaining council members. I'd like to, my name is Todd Leek. I farm in Fairfield Township. I would like to reiterate what Mr. Marchak said about value-added agriculture. This is not value-added agriculture. This is not going to do our farmers any good. I said this last week. We're not going to get a higher price, and to this, to Farmers Huifeng Plant will just be another corn buyer. I hear over and over again, we're doing this for our farmers. This has been going on ever since this thing broke out in the news. We're doing this for our farmers. Farmers, a great opportunity for farmers. It is not. It's not going to improve our bottom line, and it's going to compete with our co-op elevators. There's going to be a lot of bypass going by our co-op elevators, which is a system that we have built in this state, where it lasts 140 years, to provide an economy for this state. And what's going to go on is that we're going to hurt our local elevators, to the tune of $106 million subsidy to this one corn buyer. Tell me how that's fair. Tell me how that's a level playing field. I don't think it is. I don't know if it's even legal to do this. I mean, I've been talking in the last week with grain elevator managers and with farmers, and the issue that they bring up is unfair competition. Why should one corn receiver be subsidized at $106 million of public money when all the other elevators are not? It just doesn't seem to be within the proper business acumen of the city to do that. I mean, this is serious. This is unfair competition, not a level playing field. And I think that what needs to be done is instead of listening to the corn grower's PR lady or whatever, or assuming that you're doing this for our farmers, that you get some of the grain elevator managers here, from our local elevators and from further out as well, because they'll be affected, and farmers, and ask them, instead of making assumptions. This is not going to help the farmer. It's not going to help the local co-op elevator or any of the other elevators. So that's why I'm requesting. I'm requesting that you invite, talk, and convene with the very people that you're putting competition against. I think that's a legitimate request. I think that's only due diligence on the part of the city council, if you're going to spend this kind of money. The second thing that I want to bring up, I've been involved for the last 25 years in trade and human rights, through various organizations, with Food and Agricultural Organization, with civil society organizations, with the WTO, the Free Trade of Americas, et cetera, et cetera. And this is one thing that kind of bugs me. It's a human rights and it's an agricultural issue at the same time. And what it is, is Public Law 117-78. Very new, very recent, was passed Congress by partisan bill, signed by the president on the 23rd of December of 2021. And what it is titled, it is the...
Is that resolution 6200?
Excuse me. This is the Uyghur Forced Labor Prevention Act. Okay?
Yep.
So what it is, is that, now I'm going to read a little bit. I'll be very brief, as possible. I'm just going to do a couple excerpts from the law, just to get my point across. It says, the first thing it says is, "The policy of the United States to strengthen the prohibition against the importation of goods made with forced labor, including ensuring the government of the People's Republic of China does not undermine the effective enforcement of Section 307 of the Tariff Act of 1930." And that is, "which prohibits the importation of all goods, wares, articles, merchandise, mined, produced, or manufactured wholly in part by any foreign country by forced labor." It goes on to say how they're going to do a development of strategy of this. And what it is, is that they say it's a comprehensive assessment of risk of importing goods mined, produced, or manufactured wholly in part, or forced labor in the People's Republic of China, including from the Xinjiang Uyghur Autonomous Region, or made by Uyghurs, Kazakhs, Kyrgyz, Tibetians, members of other protected groups, in any other part of the People's Republic of China, that identifies, to the extent feasible, a list of entities in Xinjiang Uyghur Autonomous Region that mine, produce, or manufacture wholly any part of goods, wares, articles, merchandise with forced labor." I'm almost done. "To that effect, the Commissioner of U.S. Customs and Border Protection shall, except by provided subsection B, which we just read, apply a presumption..." They're having to presume, because they can't get anything out of China to confirm. They have to go with a presumption that with respect to any goods, wares, articles, and any merchandise mined, produced, or manufactured wholly in parts of Xinjiang Uyghur Autonomous Region of the People's Republic of China, are produced by an entity with a list of required by clause. The importation of such goods, wares, and merchandise is prohibited under Section 307 of the Tariff Act." That is a economic sanction, because of violation of human rights. So, in, in, what it says basically, is that if you're manufacturing in the Uyghur Autonomous Region with forced labor, and they're assuming that you're using forced labor, because there's hundreds of forced labor in reeducation camps, that the government of China has put up there, that you're using forced labor. Excuse me, just one second. Here's the Totongi Facility Number Two, less than two miles from Xinjiang Huifeng Biotechnologies. They're going to be presumed to be using forced labor. They're not going to be able to import their products into the United States. They've been importing amino acids and lysine into the United States for $241 million a year. This will go into effect here in June, by the time the government gets the list and gets the, gets all of the information from the companies. This was from their own company, $41 million. They complied within six days after the signing of the bill, that they put $41 million with the exports in the United States. They're not going to be able to probably do that anymore. So, this is their first facility in the United States. So what does that logically tell you, or infer, or imply? We can infer or imply it, that this is an end run around the law, a human rights law. This company is trying to get around the law. And to the tune of $106 million of subsidy from federal, state, county, and city money, you want the citizens of this, of this community to support that? This has been identified as genocide by the United Nations. I don't think it's the moral or ethical thing to do, is to even communicate with this company anymore. I would shut this down right now. This is out of the depth and league of this city, to start going contrary to the will and ten of Congress, the president, the United Nations, the High Commissioner of Human Rights, and 140 other countries to sign on to this. What's going on there is atrocity. And this company is part of it, and they're trying to set themselves up so they can produce this stuff domestically in the United States, so they don't have to, because they won't be able to import it. We won't be able to import it. They won't be able to export it to us. And I just don't see how we can continue when this is what's going on. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. More of a question, I, is, is there any influence on moving the facility? I mean, I'm not saying I'm for or against the project, but for rail and our infrastructure cost, if we'd look at trying to sell them some farmland in Section 12 or 13 of Brenna Township, or the west half of Section 18 in Grand Fork Township. There's a rail right there, and if they came off of 32nd, it would save a lot of infrastructure fees. I'm worried about the infrastructure costs, with the rail and all that, possible underpass. That's all I've got on that, unless it's a real done deal with the, with that specific piece of property. I know you want an ag park, but, you know, that's out in ag country and the alkali land. So, thank you.
Thank you. Well, hey, follow up with an email if you got, if you had those other locations, you can send that over where we got you. Mr. Nagle? It's TJ out there. There he is. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Thanks for the time. I'm really concerned about this project coming from a communist country, run by a dictator. That should end it right there. And I'm reading, this party, this Communist Party, has now accelerated their authority. So they have the ultimate authority over business and the politics over there. And they bring it, you want to bring it here? I say no. And I've still not seen any cost. How much has been spent already on this, up to now, of the taxpayer money? And I've seen no figures of how much this is all going to cost. You know, wait out, at all. So, I guess some people from the city went to visit Cargill, right? A plant? Why not have Cargill do this, if it's so great? An American company. Keep it in America. Keep it in America. And again, I'm really concerned about, because of the dictatorship over there in China. He can say anything, if this would happen, it better not happen. He can just pull the plug, and that's it. So I would like to have this private project shut down. I'm requesting that right now. Shut it down. Thank you.
Michelle Spicer, Ms. Spicer?
Good evening. Michelle Spicer, I live at 209 Conklin Avenue in Grand Forks, so on the north end. I guess part of the part of coming later is some of my questions have already been asked, but I'll do my best to try navigate through that. My first question is, do we know, or we have any idea of what the plant itself is going to look like? Has Huifeng even proposed like a building plan? I have not heard anything about that. I feel like that is a big part of this component.
Ms. Spicer, we do have an initial site plan, when Mr. Brooks from the city planning was talking about it. In order to go through planning and zoning, and the timeline is in March and April, we'll have to submit a detailed development plan of how they intend to develop their property. We've seen some initial, not final, drafts, but as early as March, if their timeline is correct, it'll be seen by both planning and zoning and the city council.
Okay. So more to come, it sounds like. Okay. Another question I have is, were other locations in Grand Forks ever considered for this project? Everything that we've been proposed right now is, it's all on the north end in this Faulkner Township. We have other parts of the city. I'm just wondering... I'm just wondering if anything else was ever considered. I was not able to come to the meeting last week, but I did watch it, and part of the development agreement, some terminology was change in assumptions. So, a question I had is, so if this project were to go through, and we start construction, and let's say you run into a hiccup, right, that's common in construction, who is responsible for the finances in that regard? Hu Feng, the city?
Mr. Gostad.
Yeah, the, the change in assumptions is that if during the planning stages, we think that it's going to be built in a certain methodology, and then there is some change or in, in that, that understanding, then that would allow for the change of the plans to be made under those set of circumstances. If there's a change because of construction, it would be dependent upon what component you're talking about. If it, if it's a special assessment type of project, that would increase the special assessment. If it's the raw water, waste water, it would increase the potential cost of Hu Feng under their escrow agreement. I don't know if that answers the question adequately.
I think one of the questions, Mr. Gostad, may I help you, Ms. Spicer? What happens if there's a, doesn't happen? You know, well, all those conditions, we have, we have the escrow account, we have the letter of intent, those sorts of things, Mr. Gostad.
Well, if the, if the conditions aren't satisfied under the terms of the agreement, the, the, the conditions that are in favor of the city, as I explained la-
Can you get a little closer to the-
As I explained last week, if the conditions aren't satisfied for the construction, and those conditions are in favor of the city, we have the ability to terminate the agreement and then recover those costs through the, the letter of credit, the oversight costs, and, and some of those expenses that we've incurred. That's the purpose of the letter of credit is to, is to cover our potential downside, so to speak, if, if the conditions aren't satisfied, or if there's a default under the, under the development agreement as far as their construction is concerned, that would be a default, and we'd have all those recovery methods through the letter of credit as well.
Not sure if I completely understood that. I'm a speech-language pathologist by trade, so I'm not an attorney and I'm not an engineer, but I will try process that. I come from an agricultural family, so I know that, I don't remember his name, Mr. Leach, I believe, brought up a good point, and one of my main questions to you all. Our request would be to have top city leaders meet with farmers and farmer co-ops, because we keep hearing that this is for our farming community, but they have not even been brought to the table, as far as I'm aware. And again, as he proposed, are we ethically okay with bringing in a huge company and providing them extreme assistance, and essentially having significant financial impact to smaller co-op elevators in our area? I need someone to help me understand why that's okay, because I don't. Another question I have is, do we have a plan for community engagement going forward? I still believe that there's many members of our community that are not aware of this plan. I was just with a group of friends who are all educated people, and some of them had no idea what I was talking about. So do we have a plan going forward? Mr. Mayor, I know you've had the pleasure of visiting with my mother-in-law over the phone several times, and again, she's requesting a public meeting. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Todd, did you have, I think that was on the agenda, the list of, of all the meetings that are coming up, do we have that on the agenda? I don't think that got shown today.
Yeah. We will do that for the committee of the whole, and I think beyond, you know, we're, we are in a regulatory, as I just have noted, you know, we have public hearings, we have regulatory authority, and so we certainly need to do public information for what we're doing as on behalf of the city of Grand Forks, or state and federal governments. I think the other thing that Mayor Bochensky and I followed up with, Keith Lund and the Grand Forks Region EDC, they need to be having other meetings, whether it's with farmers or co-ops or others, trying to explain the importance of this project, getting further feedback, and certainly we'll be doing it on both ends, but since we're supposed to be in a review capacity, we, we need to have somebody else do some of that outward, we'll call it marketing and, and other public information. But we'll be doing both.
All right, we got one, one more. Mr. Lees, Jared Lees out there. I do believe, did we, did we get his comment posted on? I think he had a comment on email as well, so.
Yeah, I, thank you for your wonderful website that allows you to do that and submit it to the formal record, so I, I'll give you the dedacted version of that, because I know it's getting late, so I crossed some things off. Mayor Bochensky, President Sandy, and esteemed council members, thank you for allowing me to speak to you today and voice my concerns about the planned Hu Feng development. Before you commit to any agreement, I challenge you to think twice to whom you're binding this city and its citizens to. Hu Feng is a publicly traded company, but this fact does not absolve it from its relationship with the Chinese Communist Party and their global agenda. Zhu Chenli, executive chairman, primary shareholder, and founder of Hu Feng is a model member of his party. According to his biography, he is a sitting statesman of Shengdong's 12 People's Congress, and was awarded the esteemed honor of model laborer by the Chinese Communist Party in 2003. You don't have to know much about how business is done in China to know there is no conceivable way for Hu Feng to have grown in less than a quarter century from its humble beginnings in 1999 to the multimillion-dollar revenue generating and worldwide leader in bioformation it is today unless it had the blessing of its government. With these facts in mind, Mayor Bochensky, President Sandy, and esteemed council members, do you honestly believe that those that control Hu Feng will make decisions that favor the citizens of Grand Forks over those that favor the wishes of their own government? With your experience with the Chinese government, do you believe that? This is the same government whose quest for world economic and political denomination is a continual threat to U.S. national security, our citizens, and our combined economic future. This isn't my claim. This is, and the FBI director's been quoted before, Christopher Wray, last week said, "When we tally up what we see in our investigations, over 2,000 of which are focused on the Chinese government trying to steal our information, our technology, there is just no country that presents a broader threat to our ideas, our innovation, or our economic security than China." He goes on to explain that China's actions are especially dangerous because they pursue economic espionage on multiple fronts in order to gain an unfair advantage in global markets at the cost of American companies and their workers. These actions include the agricultural, the agricultural market and sector. I gave you specific examples, if you want to go online and read those, you can, but their actual cases, trial by the DOJ. China has made it no secret they will do whatever it takes to acquire and control the necessary technology and resources to feed their population. The Chinese Communist Party considers it a matter of national security, since the land within their borders is inadequate enough to support the population density by what they estimate to be a gap of 20%. Thank you Google Translate for that one. So I had to actually go find the Chinese article for that. Sam Navado, National Defense Fellow for the Alexander Hamilton Society, does an outstanding job of highlighting this combined effort of the Chinese government's strategic acquisition of U.S. and other countries' farmland and natural resources to close that 20% gap, and the potential threats these moves pose to the way of life as U.S. citizens. He is one of several individuals sounding the alarm about China and its global agricultural conquest. If you haven't done so already, I encourage you, members of the council and fellow citizens within this chamber, to research these facts for yourself. I've provided a list, thanks to my pedigree as a professor at college, so having to cite sources, so you're welcome to go and find those things and not just take my word for it. So, I just want to close with something that came to mind about this, and while you, you go through your quest, I want you to have it in your mind as well, and it's a tale that I learned in childhood. It was about a scorpion and a frog, and I'm going to give you the Cliff Notes version of this story. Once there was a scorpion looking to cross a mighty river but being unable to swim, he almost gave up on his task until he saw a large green bullfrog relaxing in the reeds along the river shore. Having the bright idea that he could ride safely on the frog's back to the other side, the scorpion called out to the frog to solicit his help. Knowing that the scorpion, what the scorpion was, and that he possessed its stinger full of poison that could render him paralyzed, the frog initially refused this plan, but after some convincing and arranged terms of agreement, he nestled up against the shore and let the scorpion climb on. For the first half of the journey, everything went as planned, with the frog kicking against the current, while the scorpion remained high and dry on the frog's back. But just over halfway, the frog felt a sharp pain and turned his head just in time to see the scorpion retracting his buried stinger from the frog's fleshy and vulnerable backside. "You fool," the frog cried out, as lifelessness took, overtook him. "Now we'll both die," to which the scorpion replied, "I couldn't help it. You see, it's my nature."
All right, thank you, everybody. Certainly a lot to consider, and I appreciate everyone being here and sharing their, their thoughts. You got any other comments from council at this time? Mr. Weber, please.
If I may, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hesitate to ever find myself on the opposite side of something from Frank Maticek, someone I respect and I look to on many matters, and especially matters of concern to agriculture. Also, I was moved by Mr. Leach's comments last week about the impact on, on growers and, and on co-op elevators in the region. In fact, I'd been encouraged when we visited the plants in Iowa and Nebraska, that they were buying directly from the farmers. I thought that was a good thing, and then his comments gave me pause. So, I contacted Mark Watney at Farmers Union, and I've got to tell you, this is, this is what Mr. Watney told me without hesitation. He said, "There would be a sorting out period," but he saw that as being very brief, and otherwise, he saw only an upside for corn growers and for regional co-ops. So, that's, have I talked to many farmers? No, but I did go talk to Farmers Union, and that's the response I got. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Weber, for the comments by council. Now, what in the action does you need, or we're ready to?
We're going to plan to put this on the committee of the whole, and so I don't know if the council wants to vote on, on moving it forward to the committee of the whole, just so that everyone knows that it'll be on there.
Sounds good. Do you have further information from the questions that were raised today? All right.
All right. If you need a motion for another public meeting, this would be the third public meeting to discuss these matters, I'll move this be brought forward to committee of the whole next week. Would that still be a, a public meeting, committee of the whole?
I don't, I mean, I think in this case, I think it makes sense. I mean, it'll be, yeah, President Sandy chairs that, so it'll be his discretion, but I, I would imagine with council asking that it would be possible.
Very good. That'll be my motion. Thanks.
Sounds good. Do we have a second? Mr. We- Weber's motion? Okay, we got a second from Ms. Mock. Comment, please.
I guess, I thought that, you know, we were just going to have this on, this agenda for, um, I, I guess I thought tonight was just going to be a discussion item and that it was going on the committee of the whole agenda, so I wanted the opportunity to discuss a little bit more, but I think clearly we need more public discussion based on the questions and comments, and I think we need to address and make a plan for some of the comments that have been addressed. So, I guess I don't know the best way to handle that. I think it is fitting that it be on the cowl. I think the public was planning for it to be on the cowl, and I think, you know, we certainly have a list, and I'm more than willing to talk and make a plan for how we want to kind of go through these comments and questions and make the best plan forward to hear them and address them the best we can.
I think Council Vice President Mock, certainly we put items on the committee of the whole. People are here this evening. It's, it's good to know that you voted in front of them that we've moved, we're going to move this forward to the committee of the whole on Monday, and that's the reason why I'm, I'm doing it, just so there's certainty with schedules that it's going to happen, and that's all the reason I ask. Otherwise, we administratively can do it, but it's always good to get in front of the group here tonight that we are going to move it forward to the committee of the whole. It is a work session, if you will, and there's going to be further conversations. There may be a recommendation the, the following week's city council, so it just provides some, things are moving forward.
All right, thank you, Mr. Phelan. We got a, a motion to second. Any further comment? Mr. Kavami, did you have a comment?
Just that I wanted to ensure that, you know, there's a lot of good points brought up today, and I guess I'd like to have some dialogue outside of, you know, city council and committee of the whole to maybe discuss those, knowing that these questions are just going to keep coming up. I think that a lot of what we heard tonight is similar to what we heard last week, and I guess until we feel like we've answered a majority of the questions or some of the questions, I just want to make sure that maybe we set aside some time and some effort to ensure that next week, you know, the first five or six questions that we hear, we've already answered so that we don't have to go through this process again, and if we can't answer them, then that's something that we need to talk about.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kavami. Any further comment about Ms. Mock, please?
I guess one of the things I'm concerned about is that I share in some of the concerns regarding the environmental impact and understanding that, understanding the traffic impact, you know, even having some of that outreach to corn growers and seeing grain elevators and seeing that everybody is either on board or capturing what those concerns are. I also understand that in order to move forward with some of those things, that's what the development agreement actually is, and I think, you know, maybe part of the disconnect for me, and maybe some of the people in the public too, is that as we move forward and as we say yes, we want to enter into the development agreement, it seems that we are moving one step closer to saying yes to the development while not having strong answers to, you know, understanding if there's an odor, or understanding those environmental concerns and what we're doing about that. So I'm a little bit torn. I don't know how to get those answers for people that people are asking, and I don't know how to validate, other than saying I validate those questions, I share in them, I don't know how to get those answers for people if we don't move forward with the development agreement. I just also know that moving forward with the development agreement sends a message to the public that we're moving forward. So I think that that's maybe part of the rub we have going on.
Council Vice President Mock, I think you are providing a signal that, in good faith, that you want us, you want to find all those answers that are contained within that development agreement, and others that are going to come up over this next year. Otherwise, we're going to be stuck where we are today. So, I think, I agree with you that we need to invest further into finding all those answers. We need to get more information, and what the development agreement does is it protects us, because we both agreed to move in good faith to try to find those solutions, the ways forward, and if we can't find a way forward for some obstacle, then we can revert back to the development agreement. But without us moving forward with additional study, we're going to keep coming back here with the same questions without all the particulars. And Hu Feng is not going, is part of the signing of the agreement, they're going to provide us more and more information on the development itself, and without the development agreement, we're, again, with them getting additional information, they're not going to provide that information.
Mr. Veen.
Mayor, or Todd, you're, I didn't look at the timeline, but you're expecting a motion to come out of the, the committee of the whole to the council the following week, right?
I am. So, we're, we're going to administratively recommend moving forward the development agreement to the following city council meeting. Again, as we, we've continued to state, because we need to do some additional work, we need you to authorize that at the same time, and we need to protect ourselves as part of what we're investing currently ongoing in working on this particular project. So, if it's not next week or the, the February 24th, it's got to be soon thereafter, otherwise we're just going to be in a, in a standstill, and I'm not saying if you sign the development agreement, we're a goal, it just means we're going to work in good faith to resolve all those issues, and if there are some real showstoppers, some issues that we can't resolve, we'll be back here to specifically identify- to specifically identify, say we can't move forward the project because of these issues.
At this point, you're, I mean, you've done as much as you can because you're out of money.
We are out of money.
I mean, if we don't, if you don't get these agreements signed or approved, we can't pay the consultants and they can't continue to do the work.
I think we have it on site if, you know, obviously Fu Fang's not here, but they're going to say this, they're investing money too at this time, presuming that we're going to work in good faith to do it. So on their side, they're saying they're spending money too on their side to try to find a way forward on this project too. So it's both sides.
Yeah. Well, and Mayor, you looked to me for seconding the motion and the like. I'd end the way I started with, and I'm just, the amount of information and the timing doesn't fit very well with me. That's, I'm not saying no, I'm just saying I just want to be informed. And that's what's difficult, and I know you need information to keep me informed, right? That's what you're trying to say. So one of the questions, you said there was 21 conditions that had to be met. Do they all have to be met? Ken, does one of those conditions stop the project?
Mr. Gostad, I know there's more than 21, but you can, 21 plus, yeah.
Yes, any condition can be pointed to as a basis for terminating the agreement. I also want to point out that there are, as I pointed out last weekend, there is a provision that Fu Fang wants us to, wants the city to start working on some of the infrastructure before all the conditions are satisfied. That is, that is also covered by that letter of credit amount in that we need to know what those are, and that's the purpose of the letter of credit, so that if there is that termination and we've invested those dollars, that letter of credit can be utilized to recover, for the city to recover those costs in the event of a termination or in the event of a default under the development agreement itself.
Yeah. Just in the end, that was a part of what I was concerned about, the risks to understand those more thoroughly. I thought these were a good start. I think more needs to get into the details, I guess, of what all of that really means, but, you know, I appreciated that start.
Mayor Bochensky, members of city council, we intend to come back to further brief what we've placed out there in additional information, so we'll provide that overview again, and then we can have a working session on Monday to get you more comfortable, and if you are to move forward with a recommendation just on the development agreement and move it forward. So we have this week to continue to work on it. We'll work on it next week and the week after.
Mr. Weber, let's go Mr. Weber first.
There's been applause after many of the speakers tonight. I was surprised to some degree by the applause after Professor Dex Perkins' comments and Betsy's comments as well. I don't think people are really interested in giving up meat or stopping corn growing in our valley or putting an end to trucking of agricultural produce. I don't think that's what you were applauding, so I'm not sure what it was, but I do want to ask Mr. Phelan, there will be various environmental permits that will be required. Is there an environmental statement that will be part of this process or just the permits?
Mayor Bochensky and council member Weber, we don't have like an EIS, environmental impact saving, environmental assessment, but really what we've put together as part of, you know, looking at what Mr. Veen has talked about with a risk assessment, all those permits, I'm going to call as an equivalent in environmental assessment. Some will be local permits, some will be state, and some will be federal permitting, depending on what we're doing. But really, we are doing an environmental assessment. We're doing a financial assessment. We're protecting our financial interests. We're going above and beyond what a typical environmental assessment would do because we're investing in our own infrastructure. We have a more broad reach just beyond regulatory, environmental, to financial and legal and lots of other areas.
Very good. Thanks.
I got one question. Mr. Phelan, how long have you been the city administrator? What year did you start?
2013.
Oh, I wasn't here then, obviously. What Cirrus aircraft was purchased by a Chinese company, and it was in 2013 or what year?
It was around that year, yes. It was soon after the Great Recession, so it probably would have been in that, you know, 2010, 11 period of time.
Have you had complaints from that plant? I mean, it plays roughly 300 people. What have you heard over those, I guess roughly nine years now since that plant's been in operation in Grand Forks?
That's very good. And I know there's been a lot of obvious finger pointing to China, right? And so if you tell the story of Cirrus, and so I was here as the public works director and then maybe a little bit of carryover as a city administrator. So Cirrus aircraft had some serious economic challenges after the Great Recession and needed a buyer. And the buyer they found was in China, closer to the Communist Party and to the state of China than Fu Fang is. There were concerns. Number one, I think the city and the jobs development authority was pleased that they found a buyer, but there was concerns about what were they going to do? Were they going to take, you know, the Cirrus aircraft technology and bring it back to China? And when you look at about all these 10-plus years later, Mr. King has been here in front of you, working on behalf of the same company. His predecessor or successor has been here after all these years. They're only looking at expanding in Grand Forks and expanding in Duluth, expanding in Texas, expanding in Tennessee of what they've done. So if there's one example we have in our own community, it's a positive example, and it's closer to the heart of China in that case, and we've celebrated that. And I'm going to say this, thank goodness, if we want to hold ourselves to the standard of what that company did, they didn't come in here as an investment group, buy out Cirrus and then kill it. They committed to Grand Forks, they paid the loans off, made them current, and they honored their commitments. And there's been a lot of bashing tonight. I dare say American companies would not be able to hold up to the bar of what Cirrus aircraft has done.
Ms. Mock?
So, one of the points was community engagement in public meetings. Do we have a timeframe in mind for that? Would that occur, you know, do we have it on the schedule? Can we get it on the schedule? Or is that a point that on Monday we could revisit kind of a community engagement?
Yep.
Plan and scheduling?
Absolutely. Just to that point, I am not going to ask Mr. Lund to come up here. He gave me a call back today. He's been meeting on a strategy, so he's shaking his head, but I'd have him here on Monday just to go over that, you know, that outreach that people want, that he's come up with a strategy, and we'll be able to brief that on Monday.
Okay. And maybe to the jobs point as well, if we could, because I know that was part of some previous discussions, but just how they would plan to fill those jobs, since that was another concern that was mentioned. And, you know, to the environmental concerns, I share in some of them, and I also, have we had any discussions or is there any possibility that they would agree to, you know, certification or something that would show that they're reducing their energy consumption, they're reducing their output or their carbon dioxide emissions? Have there been any discussions with them along those environmental concerns and that standpoint and how it would be designed? I mean, you know, it's an industry, it's not going to have zero output and zero emissions, but at the same time, you can either have a good design or you can have a design that reduces the amount from a base. You know, have we discussed that at all with them? Is that a possibility?
Council Vice President Mock, I think that's part of what the third-party review is all about with Black and Beach. They're going to submit as a design, they're going to submit this is the kind of equipment we want to use. They're going to have some proprietary things, they're going to have some magic of what they want to do in creating those amino acids, but certainly we're going to review all of that. We're going to make sure, want sure it's as efficient and effective plant as possible, and we're going to have to review that information. So again, we can assume that they're going to want to do everything we want them to do, and that's why we have a third-party review as part of it.
Okay. The other thing that I need to say at some point, so I'm just going to say, I'm a little uncomfortable with the proposed schedule of some of that infrastructure development. I understand that they would like that to start while some of this is taking place and some of this review is taking place. I'm, you know, I need to ask more questions on the development agreement, I need to understand more, I need more information, but I don't know if I'm comfortable with that time schedule as proposed.
I think we'll drill down next week and have Mr. Gostad go over the development agreement and some of the early out items. We'll work with Fu Fang this week about what items do they want an early out on and get more specific on that, and then we'll look at that time period between now and, you know, through this year on what that means as part of our schedule and their schedule, and have some better conversations about aligning those two things, and then maybe re-enter the discussion on the development agreement and how that plays into that conversation.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Any further comments? So now we've got a motion to move it forward or move it to the next public meeting in another non-binding, or I guess in a non-binding one, being a committee of the whole. So with that, we've got a motion, a second on the floor, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. We have five, we have no information items tonight. Six, any citizen comments not related to Fu Fang tonight? Anybody waded through all that? All right, that period's closed. Seven, approval of minutes and bills.
7.1 vendor list and engineer's estimate as is presented.
All right, we got a motion to pay the bills. Motion from Mr. Weber, second from Ms. Docler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. And vendors list and engineer estimate is approved.
And 7.2 of the minutes from October 18th and November 1st.
Approval of the minutes?
As is.
As is, thank you, sir. And a second from Ms. Docler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The minutes are approved. Mr. Phelan, do you have any further comments tonight? It's number, item number eight.
I just want to celebrate two people, Mayor, that are going to leave us. Spencer Holverson, congratulations to him to become the new city minister at Devil's Lakes, so Mayor and I and others are really proud of him. And then the second person we worked with is Haley Rosasen, who's our HR manager. She's going to, she's become the HR director at True North and working with John Onkin and his team. So we're awfully proud of the team that we have in Grand Forks that when people move on, we have some small part of their success and have moved on to really better positions, things that they wanted, but still remaining in our region. So hats off to them, and I want to celebrate them tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Mayor and city council, or mayor and council member comments. Ms. Docler, any comments this evening?
Just briefly, we did send over hate crime ordinances to Mr. Gostad just to look over with the city prosecutor, and hopefully we'll get some feedback soon because I would like to have them at COW if possible, which COW sounds like it's going to be a banging good time, so you're all welcome back. But I would like to have that start of that discussion because I do think it's important and it's part of those kind of action items that we can move forward in supporting our 2017 resolution to be an inclusive city.
Thank you, Ms. Docler. Mr. Gostad?
Just to be very candid with you, my schedule is extremely tight, and I'm not sure I'll have a draft of any ordinance by a week from today, to be candid with you. I just want to make sure that the council is aware of that and Ms. Docler is aware of that, too.
I know there's a lot that's going on with present conversation that we just had for the last couple hours, but I would appreciate if we would be able to have some sort of draft or language worked on because there are other things going on at the same time in the city and different angles that are serving the constituents in the same way. While I understand the workload and I appreciate it, I do, because this is obviously a very intricate conversation that we're having with lots more questions to come and more work for you. I do think that it's important that we do have to juggle all of these different things simultaneously.
Thank you, Ms. Docler. Mr. Weber?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Kavami, you still there?
I am. No, thank you.
All right, Mr. Veen. All right, Vice President Mock. All right, and I just want to thank again everybody that came tonight and shared their opinions. I think it's really helpful. That's what this process is for, what it's about. So thank you. I think you gave us all things to think about and things to track down, and thank you for your time. Everyone sat here in a civil discourse and talked for four hours, so I appreciate that. That's a truly American thing. If you want to talk about America, there's an American thing right there. So thank you, everybody, and with that, we'll move to adjournment. Got a motion to adjourn, second Ms. Docler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.